You ready, everybody? Good evening. The July 1st, 2024 legislative session of the Anarundel County Council is called to order. Please ensure all phones and electronic devices are set to silence at this time. We will now have the invocation and pledge of allegiance led by Councilwoman Hummer.
Please pray according to your custom. God, we appreciate this week and we are grateful for the freedoms we have to elect our representatives, to assemble, to petition to the government, to argue for and against cases, and we are grateful for our country and we celebrate our birthday on Thursday. I didn't end that well. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, please read the ethics statement.
The Ethics Commission has asked that I advise you that under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The Chair of the Ethics Commission has asked that those who wish to testify in any form review the general information on lobbying sheet located on the Ethics website under forms and publications. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, please contact the Ethics Commission at 410-222-4412.
Thank you. Before we open our discussions and public hearings, I would like to remind everyone in attendance, whether testifying or as a member of the audience, we must maintain decorum in these chambers at all times. Please know, individual conversations in the audience are very disruptive to the proceedings, and I would kindly ask you to step out of the chambers if a side discussion is necessary. We will now open invitation to audience. This is an opportunity to speak briefly on any subject not included in the printed agenda. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
Yes, Madam Chair. We received four pieces of testimony, but three were related to Bills 2724 and 2824, so they have been moved to that section. So only one piece has been accepted for the invitation to audience portion. Thank you.
Thank you. As I stated before, this is a special portion of our meeting where citizens can come up and speak briefly for two minutes on items not on the agenda. We did have two people signed up, but actually, they are here to speak on Region 4. So if there's anyone in the audience wanting to speak on something not on the printed agenda, you may come forward at this time. Thank you, ma'am. When you get settled, state your name and address for the record, and you have two minutes.
Thank you. My name is Suzanne George, 8257-8259 Waterford Road, Pasadena. Councilmembers, thank you for another opportunity to speak with you. I'm testifying tonight on the topic of the real effects of zoning changes from R1 to C4. I want to begin by saying, our family would rather be celebrating my husband's milestone birthday tonight, but we know how important this is. We've sacrificed annual family vacations as well because of the misery R1 to C4 causes. As you hear, read, and vote about these changes tonight, we hope you will be moved to do what's fair. Commercial zoning changes must be stopped in our residential districts. Our small neighborhood is targeted and attractive to consumer buyers because our lots are large. We aren't hundreds of homes crammed four to an acre backed by HOAs. We are rural family homesteads. The word "commercial" is powerful. Anyone in the vicinity of it loses all rights to quality of life and a healthy peaceful existence. We have catalogued thousands of videos, photos, and documentation from 10 years of the horrible living conditions we endure and are still fighting because of the property next door to us that was changed from R1 to C4. April 27th, I sent council a diary of years of our daily living next to C4. We suffer from toxic fumes from paint, metal cutting, diesel smoke, backup alarms, absurd noise 24/7, including holidays, heavy equipment rumbling, the fire department finding propane leaking into the air, our home shaking on its foundation, items falling off the walls, glasses rattling, you get the idea. I mentioned before, I was one of two in the county to contract West Nile virus. The mosquito infestation there is well documented by MDE for years and still noncompliant today with OPZ. Our homes should be our refuge, not a place we need to get away from. We love our homes, so we fight for it. We have over 52 years on our property and our neighbors even longer. Please help deter buyers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing no additional movement in the audience, invitation to audience is now closed. Is there any other, any item any council member would like to place on the agenda? Madam Auditor.
Good evening. I'm Michelle Bowler, County Auditor. I wanted to take a minute to respond to comments made at the June 17th council meeting during the discussion of Bill 5224. I know this is a bit unusual, but when I returned to work and saw the video of the last meeting, I felt the comments made about my lack of responsiveness and availability to discuss aspects of my office's work and the potential relationship to the bill were misrepresented, and I wanted to make sure everyone fully understood the context of those comments as a response to questions by the council. As was in my response to the Office of the Budget's question on how long my office would need to review grants, I provided a detailed response that explained that this bill would remove my office from the process unless the council decided to have a hearing on a proposed resolution. This bill does not require any specific support to be provided to the council to make their determination on if there should be a resolution. Currently, my office reviews grants as a part of supplementary appropriation bills and the annual budget review. Generally, one of the longest parts of our review of existing grant fund supplementary appropriations is obtaining grant award documentation. We are oftentimes provided grant abstracts, but those are only summaries of grants created by the administration. We look for evidence that grants have been awarded. While this bill requires that a grant award be provided to the controller to make the certification, it does not require that same support to be provided to the council to make their determination. As mentioned earlier, it also removes my office in our current review of grant award documentation until after the council has made their determination, rather than allowing our review to support their determination. Under the current charter, our access to records would either be related to an audit or special review or proposed legislation. The council could ask my office to perform additional duties to cover these grants, but I want to make it clear that it would not occur, as it does now, without further action. I also wanted to note that this bill treats every grant the same, whether it is a $60,000 grant or a $3 million grant with significant matching and future obligations. I wanted to make sure that the council had all of this information regarding Bill 5224 and to clarify the comments on the record in my absence. Thank you.
Thank you. May I have a motion that the partial reading of any bill, resolution, amendment to a bill or resolution, or minutes constitutes the reading of the whole?
So moved. Radbien.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Madam Secretary, please read the minutes of June 17th, 2024.
Minutes of June 17th, 2024. The county council meeting was called to order by Chair Pickard at 6:00 PM. It was opened with the invocation given by Mr. Volkey and was followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Boy Scout Troop 382. The meeting was held in the county council chambers in Annapolis, Maryland.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of June 17th, 2024?
Let better. Radbien, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. The minutes of June 17th, 2024 stand approved as read. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of the bills to be introduced this evening.
Bill Number 6424, An Ordnance Concerning Planning and Development: Master Plan for Water Supply and Sewage Systems.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of any resolutions to be introduced this evening.
Resolution Number 2824, Resolution Approving Estimates of the Annual Cost of Providing Health Insurance Benefits and the Employer Subsidies Used to Determine the Rates for Certain Participants Under the County Employee and Retiree Health Benefits Program. Resolution Number 2924, Resolution Confirming the Appointment of a Member to the Classified Service to Serve on the Pension Oversight Commission for Anarundel County.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 58-24.
Bill Number 5824, An Ordnance Concerning the Issuance, Sale, and Delivery of Anarundel County, Maryland General Obligation Bonds and Bond Anticipation Notes.
Mr. Hunt, this is an administration bill. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table, I have Billy Penley from the Office of Finance, as well as Mr. William Hen, who is our bond counsel. Bill 5824 is the annual bond ordinance concerning the issuance, sale, and delivery of the county's general obligation bonds and bond anticipation notes, or bands. Bands are issued in the form of a line of credit, which are short-term loans. This program is authorized by the Maryland General Assembly. Purpose of this ordinance is to authorize the issuance of bands not to exceed $900 million and bonds not to exceed $1,518,705,011 to finance the county's FY25 county council-approved capital budget or in such capital budgets for prior fiscal years. The ordinance also authorizes the issuance of refunding bonds to refund some or all of the outstanding bond issues not to exceed 120% of the aggregate principal amount of the outstanding bonds. The county's bond council worked with the finance office to prepare this ordinance. All information was presented to the auditor for review. There is one amendment that we're happy to discuss at the appropriate time, but it makes corrections to reflect certain changes and to conform it with the FY2025 approved capital budget. We are happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions of my colleagues at this time? Seeing none, we'll now open the public hearing on Bill Number 58-24. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair. We did not.
We have no one signed up in advance to speak on Bill Number 5824. Is there anyone in the audience wanting to come forward at this time? Seeing no movement in the audience, we will now close the public hearing on Bill Number 58-24. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 58-24.
Bill Number 5824, An Ordnance Concerning the Issuance, Sale, and Delivery of Anarundel County, Maryland General Obligation Bonds and Bond Anticipation Notes.
And there is one amendment. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 1.
Amendment Number 1. This amendment increases the amount of bond authority, corrects certain amounts in the bill to conform to the final capital budget, and replaces Exhibit 1 with Exhibit 1A.
Mr. Hunt, did you want to make any further comments?
Just very briefly, Madam Chair. Thank you. That does describe exactly what the amendment does, and if you're wondering about the exact amount of the increase, it is $3,889,012.
May I have a motion to adopt Amendment Number 1?
Radbien, so moved.
Is there a second?
I'm a second.
Is there any discussion on Amendment Number 1 to Bill 58-24? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 1.
Ms. Radbien.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 1 to Bill 5824 has been adopted.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Madam Secretary, we will hear this bill again at the July 15th, 2024 meeting for a final vote. Okay. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 51-24.
Bill 5124, An Ordnance Concerning Personnel, Classification, and Pay Plans: Classified Service and Exempt Service, Public Ethics, Financial Disclosure.
Mr. Hunt, this is also an administration bill. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table are Ann Boudowski, our Personnel Director, and Kelly Kenny from the Office of Law. Bill 5124 is to enact the Personnel Officer's Class and Pay Plan for county classified and exempt position classifications. This is consistent with the 2025 budget.
Is there any discussion, my colleagues? We'll now open the public hearing on Bill Number 51-24. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair. We did not.
There is no one signed up ahead of time. If there's anyone in the audience who wants to speak on Bill 51-24, I'll give you a minute or two. Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill Number 51-24 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 51-24.
Bill 5124, An Ordnance Concerning Personnel, Classification, and Pay Plans: Classified Service and Exempt Service, Public Ethics, Financial Disclosure.
Is there any further discussion from the administration or my colleagues? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 51-24.
Ms. Radbien.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 5124 has passed.
Thank you. Okay. We will now be moving forward with Bills Number 27-24 and 2824. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of those bills.
Bill Number 2724, An Ordnance Concerning General Development Plan, Region 4 Plan. Bill Number 2824, An Ordnance Concerning Comprehensive Zoning, Region 4.
This is an administration initiative. Y'all have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table, I have Christina Pompas, Cindy Carrier, and Eric Ketterling from the Office of Planning and Zoning, and Kelly Kenny from the Office of Law. This is the last night for amendments on the Region 4 comprehensive zoning and region plan bills. I know there are a number of amendments and lots of folks signed up to testify, so if there are any questions, we're happy to answer them.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we will now open a joint public hearing on Bill Number 27-24 and Bill Number 2824. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
Yes, Madam Chair. We received 17 pieces of testimony to Bill 2724 and 90 pieces of testimony to Bill 2824. They have been shared with the council, added to the record, and posted to the website.
Thank you. Yes.
Madam Chair, may I have a moment?
You may.
Thank you. So this message and comment is for my colleagues and for members of the public. I know my colleagues have received correspondence regarding the ongoing conversations to potentially reach an agreement for the Safe Harbor Marina parcel in Pudicree Point. We did, or I did give till the 11th hour, 6 o'clock, and unfortunately, no agreement has been reached. I will be moving forward with the amendment to retain MA 3 this evening.
We do have 44 individuals signed up this evening. I want to remind everyone that this body can only legislate until midnight, so we would like to be as expeditious and efficient with testimony as possible. You can, as an individual, testify in this joint hearing once for two minutes. You cannot testify on behalf of someone else in addition to yourself. So please make sure, I'm going to call up everyone in groups of six, as I have received them, and then there will be a time for people who did not sign up in advance to come forward, but you can only testify in one two-minute block this evening. Are we ready? Okay. The first six names I have are Mark Phillips, Vicki Phillips, Jennifer Jackson, Wes Jones, Joshua Hewitt, and Christian Canby. If you're in the chambers, please come forward. Are you, Mr. Phillips?
I am Wes Jones.
You are Wes Jones? Okay. So, Mr. Jones, go ahead. I'm just going to crush you off. Go ahead.
Wes Jones, 312 Delma Avenue, Pasadena. Several of my community members are still trying to get in. Hopefully, they'll be here before it's over. I'll start with addressing Mr. Volkey. "The community of Selby Grove, consisting of over 100 homes with hundreds of citizens, has overwhelmingly expressed directly to you our opposition to your pursuit of rezoning the property at 201 Ember Drive from R1 Residential to W2 Industrial. All of this due to environmental noise and home devaluation concerns. Yet you continue your relentless pursuit of pushing for industrial build out of that parcel. The impact to the headwaters of the Magathie River due to your proposed industrialization of this parcel cannot be disputed, regardless of the mitigations that you attempt. The increase of noise due to the expansion of the industrial processes cannot be disputed. The devaluation of our homes cannot be disputed. There are numerous professional studies proving how industrial development impacted surrounding home values, and they appear to vary between 3% and 5% impact. For each homeowner in our community, that works out to be somewhere between $15,000 and $25,000 each." Devaluation of our homes. That's what allowing any development other than R1 Residential on 201 Ember would cost each household in the community of the Selby Grove community. I can provide some of these studies to you if you wish. To the members of the council, I ask that you stand with the wants and needs of our community and vote against any industrialization of 201 Ember Drive. Councilman Volkey is clearly standing for his own needs and wants over ours. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, state your name and address for the record.
Joshua Hewitt, 7808 Harbor Road, Pasadena, Maryland. Okay, so I was here in support of the rezoning of Geysler Point Marina. As an individual of the neighborhood, just wanted to say that since I've been in the neighborhood, Jean, the owner of the Marina, has been very consistently involved with the neighborhood as a whole. When I first moved in, I had set up a kind of get-together. She was one of the only people that put any money towards that event and has consistently tried to take part in all the board meetings and stuff that we have in the neighborhood for the community association. My understanding, you know, the goal is to get the Marina up and in conformity, and I think that her intentions are of the best. That's all I have.
Thank you. So I'm going to keep going down this list, and I will circle back to folks that did not come up when the called, if they're in line, okay? So I'm going to go Benjamin Dorsey, Robert Heimbunch, Leslie Price, Maureen Car York, Debbie Ladato, Phil Hager. Any of you that are here? Okay, I'll circle back to folks that don't come back that have signed up, okay? I did not, but go ahead and... Go ahead. You can have a seat. Sir, we'll start with you.
Benjamin Dorsey, and I'm in favor of the Marina. I used to actually work for Bob, and his daughter's done an excellent job cleaning up the Marina, making it a better place. I'm in favor of this rezoning. People just don't understand what it takes for the infrastructure. If it doesn't get rezoned to allow marine contractors to come in, then they have to go other places, which drives up the cost of repairs to the waterfront. A lot of people just see the behind-the-scenes, and they don't understand if their neighbor can't get their riprap replaced in a timely and affordable fashion, you know, that's going to drive prices down in the area, and it's also going to hurt the contractors that are currently using the property. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Hager?
Good evening, Madam Chair. Distinguished members of the council, Phil Hager, Hager Land Use, thank you for this opportunity to advocate in support of Amendments Number 30 and 34. I'm requesting your assistance tonight in getting these two amendments adopted. They deal with a property located near the intersection of Mountain Road and Waterford Road. The property is just over nine acres and has more than 100 linear feet of frontage along Mountain Road and nearly 600 linear feet of frontage along Maryland 648. The property owner is asking that this property be reclassified to C1 to allow it to be developed in accordance with the ongoing pattern of development in this region. Commercial zoning is appropriate for a property of this size, particularly fronting to arterials. Properties to the east are currently zoned C1. One of the adjoining properties is currently being rezoned as part of this process, and the parcel to the northeast is zoned C1. And additionally, there are two parcels directly across Mountain Road that are zoned C4. So, given the pattern of development that has been ongoing for some time, the size of this property, its location on two arterials, it is only appropriate it be allowed to follow the pattern of development in the manner in which it's currently evolving. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ma'am?
Leslie Price from 2112 Bayfront Terrace. I'm speaking on behalf of the amendment that Ms. Fiedler has proposed today to return 2116 Bayfront Terrace, a small yacht club, to MA 3, which it has been for the last 50 years. This is a club that is very much a part of our community. It's four and a half acres. It's right in the middle of the community. Ms. Fiedler was nice enough to come and see the property and understand what it would mean to our neighborhood to have it be rezoned into a commercial Marina. We did try and work with Safe Harbor, the new owner of the yacht club, to try and create something that would look like MA 3 but be more applicable to them as a commercial owner. And we did get down to the last 20 minutes, and we're not able to reach an agreement with them for a variety of reasons. We are asking all of the council to please support Ms. Fiedler's amendment and make sure that this part of our community can remain the way it has been.
Thank you. Sir, state your name and address for the record.
Dieter Grotier. I live at 2107 Harbor Drive and am a member of the Pudicree Point Community Association. We have lived in that neighborhood for over 40 years and are surprised that the new owner of that Marina, who claims to be the largest Marina owner and developer and operator in the world. They own presently in the United States 130 Marinas, and they were not able to determine that this neighborhood or the Marina property is listed as a MA 3 zoning. And they could not see that this was in violation of the performance of their organization that was in total violation. Now, I understand that the zoning committee has determined that in order to bring that Marina into conformance with the zoning, we will upgrade or downgrade the zoning to MA 2. And we, having lived in this peaceful neighborhood for so many years, are surprised that the county has proposed to agree in order to bring the owner into compliance with the zoning that they are now under. We hope that you, ladies and gentlemen, will vote to join in with our neighborhood and refuse the changing of that Marina zoning. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. This panel is dismissed. I'm going to call, I'm going to go in order, and if you were not in the room when I called your name originally, I will come back to you. Tracy Nicole, Logan Jub, Brian Klug, Jessica McMillan, Richard Brill, but that was him. Okay. Cynthia Pugh-Givens. Okay, we're getting in the room here. He's not on the list. Is Ms. Tracy Nicole? Okay. Ma'am, go ahead. We'll start with you. We'll just go down the line. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for hearing us today. I'll make it brief. My name is Cynthia Pugh-Givens. I live at 105 South Ritters Lane, Owings Mills, Maryland. I am the personal representative for 1401 and 1403 Shot Town Road in Annapolis. I'm really upset right now. Our LD zoning, for us, severely limits us being able to build on our property. This is aired property. This is legacy land. So we were vying for R1. I get here, and I see that it's low-density residential to rural. I am hoping and praying that rural means that we can build on our land like we used to. Now, I'm not all up on the zoning laws, however, I'm really hoping and praying that that is the case because it seems we're going from bad to worse. We're paying exorbitant taxes every year on this property. That's the bottom line, and we all know money affects us all, okay? I understand, after watching the June 17 meeting, that everybody was really upset about interrupting their nature and their solitude and their peace. What about our peace? What about our legacy? I understand that maybe everybody did not have land left to them, but we did. And there's something that we need to do with it to carry on our ancestors' dreams so that we can enjoy that peace and solitude that we had when I was coming up as a little I do hope and pray that we can get beyond this, and I expect you to do the right thing.
Thank you, ma'am. Sir?
Good evening. My name is Logan Jub. I live at 8095 Sally Road, Glenburg, Maryland. Thank you for providing this opportunity to talk about a property that is very important to my father and me. My father, Randall Jub, and I are local business owners, and we recently purchased the 9.1-acre property located at the intersection of Route 177 Mountain Road and Route 648 Waterford Road in Pasadena. We are seeking to rezon this property to C1, low-intensity commercial. We think this makes sense because it fronts on two arterials. It has vehicular access to both and is pretty much surrounded by other commercial properties. The fact that this, that so much commercial land already exists and the fact that more properties in this area are being rezoned to commercial clearly shows that this is an area, this area is continuing to go in this direction. We think this is a logical request and benefit commercial interests and will be good for the county. As I mentioned at the outset, we recently acquired this property. That is why this rezoning request is coming through this process. Otherwise, we would have brought this forward several months ago so that it could have gone through the SAC process, and we would have had the chance to gain their approval and endorsement. This is a very reasonable request. It is consistent with the evolution of the part of the, this part of the region, and it meshes nicely with the existing neighborhood and where it is going. C1 is, this instance, in this instance promotes the best long-term interest of Pasadena and Anarundel County. Thank you for supporting CZR 4PAS 607. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am?
Good evening. My name is Jessica McMillan. I live at 4405 Mountain Road in Pasadena. Thank you for this chance to support the rezoning of the nine-acre property located near the intersection of Mountain and Waterford Roads. I have known Randy and Logan Jub for quite some time. I am well acquainted with their work ethic, the important services that they provide to the county residents, and the impact of the jobs that they provide through their business organizations. I encourage your support of CZR 4607. Having this property zoned C1 will benefit, be a benefit for them as they continue to build their business interests. It will also be beneficial to their employees and their clients. Commercial zoning makes sense, given the fact that this property is situated at the intersection of these two major roadways in a portion of Pasadena that has clearly transitioned to commercial. I am well aware of the amount of commercial activity in this area, and this property is an important keystone in the development of this portion of the county. I urge your support of this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
Good evening. My name is Brian Klug. I live at 8620 Holton Harbor in Pasadena. I'm here tonight in support of the rezoning of the nine-acre property near the intersections of Mountain and Waterford Roads. Randy and Logan Jub are good people, and they work hard to make a living and to provide good jobs and a beneficial service to their community. Having this property zoned C1 will be a benefit for them as they continue to build their business interests. I am supportive of them, and I think this zoning change makes sense. C1 is the natural designation for this property, given its size, location, and considering all the commercial activities that are going on around it. I hope you will see the merit in this request and will join me in endorsing not just this amendment but the efforts of these two hard-working Anarundel County natives. Please vote in favor of CZR 4607. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
Hi. My name's Richard Brill. I'm a 40-year resident of 2105 Bayfront Terrace, and thank you for this opportunity, Madam Chairman, and the rest of the council members. I wanted to first say I appreciate Amanda's Herculean efforts to try to get us, to make an agreement or try to work with us and Safe Harbor's to come to an agreement, but we just could not get there. And when you look back, I think the big, important thing here is the direction that was given to the zoning when the 2040 plan was initiated, and that was to change Marinas in small communities to make them more compatible with the surrounding areas. So I think that's what this amendment will do. It will retain the Marina in its current condition and make it continue to be compatible with the surrounding community. MA2 would provide them opportunities that would not. So I certainly appreciate the rest of the councilmen's support for Amanda and this amendment, and thank you very much.
Thank you. This panel is dismissed. Next on my list, I have Jessie Oberite, Andrew Price, Irene Knott, Lisa Russell, Frank Langfitt, and Rosario Isquero. I've been practicing. Ma'am, we'll go ahead and start with you.
Negotiating with Safe Harbor around the clock this week convinced me they will never be self-limiting. They do not honor agreements. They do as they please, and if opposed, tie up cases in the court while still doing as they please. Either way, they win. They disrespect member contracts, too. They promise great benefits, clean up the property, then neg or price members out and block access to them and the community. Granting MA2 zoning will not stop them from going beyond, just as MA3 zoning didn't. They might become an industrial Marina, a dealer of trailer boats, or a mega yacht club for celebrities. Whether they foresee it now or not, it will be a tragedy for our creek, our community, and our bay. I brought a list of cases which I've submitted to the portal as evidence of them ignoring law, contracts, and contracts with the community. They claim they answer only to members. We are all members in the community. They really only answer to investors, no matter how the land they bought is regulated. I also submitted a letter from OPZ, which confirms that recommended MA3 and the county council approved it every time since 1972. I'm sorry, but OPZ's sudden switch to MA2, without input from our community, immediately called to mind Maryland scandals, and I submitted a list of scandals to explain why. I've lived here a long time. But interesting, academic researchers rank Maryland as the 14th most corrupt state when they include legal quid pro quo, deals between lobbyists, donors, and campaigns. I'm glad this council has vowed to be transparent and no deals. Thank you. I made two minutes.
Good job. Sir?
Hi. My name is Steve Knott. My wife, Irene, actually asked me to come down for her. We are here, we're here to support the Geisler Marina and the development. We have been, we live at 2252 Lake Drive in Pasadena. We've lived there for four years. When we first got to the neighborhood, when we went by Geisler, it was in severe disrepair, and Jeanne has brought it back to a very substantial, a very nice Marina. And we feel like she has been a very strong member of the community and feel like we should support her. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
Excuse me. My name is Andrew Price. I live at 2112 Bayfront Terrace, two driveways away from Safe Harbor, Pottery Point. I'd like to use this time to thank our councilwoman, Amanda Fiedler, for doing what Plan 2040 calls for. It tells us that the, in resolving disputes between non-conforming Marinas and surrounding residential communities, we are supposed to analyze the relationship between them and determine whether or not the proposed zoning regulations are more compatible with the existing community. We have submitted a variety of letters to you to tell you why it's not compatible. There are three uncontested facts that I'd like you to focus on. The first, and all these can be confirmed by your colleague. Safe Harbor bought this property without ever looking at what its zoning requirements were. They didn't know. They didn't care. After they took operation of the Marina, they found out that they were MA3 and not a commercial Marina. Notwithstanding that fact, they engaged in a pattern and practice of pretending that they were an MA2 and engaged in a variety of different activities that were not, that are permitted under MA2 but are not permitted in MA3, and they knew it. They were selling fuel. They were, they were doing fish, allowing charter fishermen to come. They were renting boats. All of these activities are violations of MA3 status, and they knew it. We were asked to try to work out a relationship, negotiate with Safe Harbor. We told Amanda that we thought it'd be difficult because these people have not been honest with themselves or with the community.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am?
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to address the council tonight. My name's Jessie Oberite. I'm at 1191 White Coral Court in Arnold. I'm here with concerns about the rezoning amendment for 161 Ferguson Road. I'm a natural resources professional. I manage the Broadnick Nature Nook and Greenberry Point Biodiversity Project. Both are social media-based platforms with the primary goal of education, environmental literacy, and advocacy. I'm here representing today that I feel are the greatest victims to any of this commercial development that would happen on this parcel of land, but they have no voices to advocate for themselves. I'm here to speak for the trees, but also the plants, the birds, the crabs, and all the animals that are repeatedly being victimized by overdevelopment in Anarundel County. I am here to voice my opposition to the rezoning of the property at Ferguson Road. The loss of tree canopy in Anarundel County is appalling. Chesapeake Conservancy published a tree canopy survey and indicated Anarundel County was losing tree canopy at a rate faster than most every other Maryland county. Loss of mature tree canopy is a major problem. It's lost habitat. It's lost carbon sequestration. It's increased pollution runoff. It's increased erosion. It's increased water temperature. It is bad, and it must stop. This property sits at the headwaters of Mill Creek, and it will negatively impact every ecosystem and community downstream. It also sits in the Chesapeake Bay critical area, a piece of it does, and is designated as a resources conservation area. Commercial development will lead to increased impervious surface runoff, polluted runoff, and increased temperature of that runoff, which raises the water temperature in the surrounding waterways. So I'm here to encourage the council to vote against the rezoning of this property. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. This panel is dismissed. My next six are Dr. Randolph Rauell, Kyle Bodenhorn, Elsa Bennett, John Bennett, Reverend Sir, we're going to start with you. Go ahead. State your name and address on the record. You have two minutes.
My name is Kyle Bodenhorn. I live at 202 Drum Avenue South in the Selby Grove community. I'm here to speak in opposition of any zoning or land use changes to 201 Ember Drive. This property is located directly adjacent to my community, the Selby Grove community, with over 100 houses and 400 residents. If this zoning is changed, it will result in the removal of a large portion of the trees on this property, placement of additional very noisy equipment used for mulch grinding and recycling. The county Office of Planning and Zoning has already recommended leaving the property R1. So has the Planning Advisory Board, and the Magathie River Association is against this change citing high potential for damage to Lake Waterford. Thirty-six members of our community spoke in opposition with Mr. Volkey and CLM on June 11, and then four of us came here on the 17th and spoke with you in opposition. We gathered 128 signatures on our petition in opposition of any changes to the zoning at this property. I'm here again testifying because Mr. Volkey once again appears intent on changing this and pushing this rezoning through. He stated in his email to our community that he and the council members have worked to find a balanced solution based on all the feedback he received. He listed four supposed benefits. I ask you, because you got the same email I did, which one of those things benefits the 400 residents who live next to this property? They benefit lots of other people, but not the people who will hear this noise every day. Would any of you be willing to live next to this grinding operation, which already disregards the restrictive covenants as well as noise and sound ordinances? Can you tell me that you would honestly embrace this change willingly with the knowledge that the disruption to your life would only increase? If you wouldn't, then please don't force this upon my community. I'll repeat what you heard from me on June 17. This has me genuinely worried that the concerns of mine and of my neighbors are falling upon deaf ears and are not being adequately represented.
Thank you, sir.
It's for that reason that I will ask you here on record that you act in the best interest of our community.
Thank you, sir. Ma'am, go ahead. State your name and address for the record. You have two minutes.
Hi. My name is Dr. Randolph Rauell. I'm with Mulberry Hill Community, 213 for Mulberry Hill Road. Hopefully by now you have read the written testimony and provided background information on Mulberry Hill. A descendant community has been in existence for 175 years. The zoning map provided by the Office of Planning and Zoning is a basis for requesting this zoning change from R1 to R2. We believe it's only fair that those of us living in the same geographical area should be able to benefit from R2 zoning as those who are on the south side of Mulberry Hill Road. This change will help to address housing shortages for present and future generations, create wealth-gaining opportunities, and preserve our 175-year legacy. Now, at this time, I would like some, some folks to stay and who support us in this, in this change. Twelve property owners in Mulberry Hill who submitted application, residents on both sides of north, on the south and north side of Mulberry Hill Road, those who have historically, historical ties and ancestors in Mulberry Hill, and organizations like ACT and Showing Up for Racial Justice in Annapolis, Annual Fathers' Day Foundation, Reverend Samuel Green. These are the folks who support this amendment. In closing, your vote is support, to support this amendment. Over the past two months, you've heard insurmountable challenges in other communities, historical communities. challenges in other communities, historical communities. I ask that you not forget the other issues that you're hearing, similar issues. You're hearing from communities like Browns Woods and Skidmore and Middletown and Clayhill and Shot Town, Shelbyville, Shelbyville, and Pumfry and Freedom, Freetown. All of these historical communities are faced with the kind of problems that keep them from building. I would also like to personally thank the Office of Planning and Zoning, who work with us during the week and weekends, and for the two councilpersons, Lisa and Amanda, that came together despite their political ties.
Thank you, sir.
So we thank them for that.
Thank you, sir.
Came together.
Thank you, everybody.
Good evening. My name is Stephen Tolett. I'm the pastor of Asbury Broadneck United Methodist Church, 657 Broadneck Road in Annapolis, and co-chair of ACT, Anarundel Connecting Together. As a nonprofit, nonpartisan people's power organization, ACT works across ethnicity, socioeconomic backgrounds, faith, and geography to win on issues of justice and equality for low and moderate income residents and communities in Anarundel County. Attainable affordable housing is one of our top priorities, as you know. The following statements are made on behalf of our members owning property and living within Region 4 planning area on Bills 27, 24, and 28, 24, and the amendment to be introduced recommending zoning changes within Region 4 Mulberry Hill Community. Specifically, ACT supports the amendments to approve the rezoning applications of residents of the Mulberry Hill Community from R1 to R2. And we fully expect that all seven members of this council will fulfill their responsibilities to these residents by approving the amendments sponsored by councilmembers Fiedler and Rodvian. As residents of the Region 4 planning area, the descendant property owners within this legacy community must be afforded the same equitable opportunities to increase the use of their land to accommodate family members and address their existing housing shortage as well as plan for the future. To make it plain, many of the descendant property owners in legacy community are my members and friends who are the descendants of stolen Africans who farmed and helped to build up the Broadneck Peninsula. As you well know from the maps provided in these sessions, the land use designations of the properties in the surrounding white community are already zoned as R2. With this precedent, no valid argument exists against zoning, these zoning changes. The county's current zoning policies have long supported exclusionary development of large, single-family housing on large lots. These policies related to inequitable zoning practices and regulatory barriers are the cause of the significant low housing supply that exists today and the inability of residents to attain affordable housing.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Bonner?
Thank you. I'm Linda Hanafin Bonner, resident of Annapolis, and I also co-chair the ACT Attainable Housing Team. You've heard from Pastor Tolett and Dr. Rauhl regarding the need for the change of zoning in the Mulberry Hill Community. But what we also heard during the past month, during the council hearings, were other residents of the Region 4 area who came and testified against rezoning their properties, who were also in these descendant communities. I question, had they fully been informed about the options for housing and how they could use their land to provide housing for their family and their members for the future? And what were the financial implications of opposing an upzoning? I also have to question some of the other members in Region 4 who came in and opposed upzoning, if they really took the time to sit back and think about what the financial situation would be for them and their family by denying the change of zoning. We also found out during this process, as Dr. Rauhl mentioned, that there are many other communities within Anarundel County that have legacy and descendant family ties. We need to have these communities identified, documented, and be part of the planning process. The adopted Plan 2040 has a goal that specifically states inclusion of minority and disenfranchised and economic disadvantaged within the planning process. We need to be sure that this occurs, and we need to reach out to these other communities to be sure that they are informed of their options to provide housing on the property that they own instead of having developers come in and try to take it away from them at low prices because they can't afford to pay the taxes. Thank you.
Thank you. This panel is dismissed. I'm going to call the next six. Julia Langfit, John Rollin, Ernest Tucker, Linda Davis, Michael Lewis, and Duke Aaron. Are you in the chambers? If you're in the chambers, you can come forward. We're going to start with you, Ms. Davis.
I'm Linda Davis, 215 Cornet Drive. This message is for Mr. Smith, Ms. Fiedler, Ms. Ledbetter, and Mr. Volkey regarding your support of Amendment 14 to Bill 2824 related to the property owners on Shot Town Road. There is an expression I'm sure everyone has heard, "You can't see the forest for the trees." To the Republican councilmembers, did you not see the forest for the trees? In this case, the trees were represented by Emily, a young white child who wanted her trees preserved, and the forest was represented by the black families who have lived on the land for generations and want to build homes for their families. It seems like seeing the trees kept you from seeing the forest and made you vote for the white side instead of the right side. To Councilmember Smith, did you not see the forest for the trees? In this case, the trees were represented by Councilmember Courtesy, which made you vote with the councilmember whose district includes Shot Town Road. It seems like seeing the trees kept you from seeing the forest, the black families who have lived on this land for generations and want to build homes for their families, and also made you vote for the white side instead of the right side. The Office of Planning and Zoning, to you, did you not see the forest for the trees? In this case, the trees were represented by spot zoning. What is the harm of spot zoning in this case? What is the harm of giving black families who want to build R1 and the other families who want RLD? It's not like the people who want R1 are going to build commercial properties and be cutting down lots of trees. Like Emily, they too love the forest. All they want is the ability to build homes for their families on the property they have owned for generations. To all involved, this is a both-and situation, if only you could see the forest for the trees, forest and the trees. Emily can have her forest, and the black people can have homes for their families. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Sir, state your name and address. For the record, you have two minutes.
My name's Duke Aaron. I have the business on Waterford Road and BNA Boulevard Storage Facility, Aaron Storage. Everyone around us is basically C4. There's a property at the end of the road. I don't have the information of what they were. At the end of the road is applying for, to go to another zoning, and it's residential. He wants a light commercial, which I'm in the business in the area. I have no problem going against this. We've got so much commercial in that area now, it's basically commercial property. And then there's another neighbor on the other side of us, Mr. Rollins. He had C4, and they've knocked him back down to a lighter industrial. And like I said, the whole area in that area is really not protesting with the business there. Now, some of the neighbors on the other side, which I could see their point too, but that whole section from 100 on Waterford Road and Old Annapolis Boulevard is basically all C4 in there. You have some older people from the years back that wouldn't change over. And the other big thing that I want to bring up, I've talked to the people down at Old Mill Road, which you have here. You have Waterford Road, BNA Boulevard going into together, Lake Waterford down here, and a little side road that comes out. It's a death trap right there. The state is not maintaining the speed on Waterford Road. We used to have a small circle there, and they done away with it and said they done away with it because it was only two roads. It's not two roads. There's three roads. BNA Boulevard, Waterford Road, and then it's Old Mill Road. It's three of them right there. And the people in Old Mill Road right now are saying, when they could try to get out of there, the people coming down by Lake Waterford are over the speed limit, and somebody's going to get killed there. It's just an accident waiting for place to happen. Waterford Road, we've tried to get the state to maintain the speed on it. It's a 50 mile, 40 mile an hour speed limit. They do 80, 90 mile an hour on that road. The county is protesting with them that it's the state's job.
Thank you.
So we need to get something done.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Sir, state your name and address. On the record, you have two minutes.
My name's Michael Lewis. I live at 112A Hastings Lane in Pasadena, Maryland. I'm part of the Selby Grove Community as well, and I'm here to speak in opposition to the rezoning of 201 Ember Drive from residential to really any kind of industrial or commercial. Most of the reasons have already been stated here tonight. You've heard about Magatee River Association's concerns about the impact on the environment. You've heard about the devaluation of our homes, and you've heard about the noise pollution that, you know, my children in the backyard are going to have to hear from basically sunup to sundown if this expansion is allowed. It already happens, but this would make that even worse. And I'm frankly troubled that I have to come down here and defend my community just maintaining a livable space. I shouldn't have to fight against my government from devaluing my home.
This panel is dismissed. I'm going to call the next six names. Roger Carland, Holly Carland, Nick Deutsch, Amy Leahy, Joseph Ross, and Jean Geisler. We'll start with you, sir.
Roger Carland, Selby Grove, Pasadena. I oppose any rezoning of 201 Ember Drive. When I was elected, I was promised, I promised to advocate for and protect our community, ensuring any development where I have a vote will add to, not detract from, our way of living and the quality of life. That's Nathan Volkey. That's my backyard. How does bringing more of that closer to my backyard and to my community add to our quality of life? How does it not detract from our quality of life? Mr. Newton has informed Mr. Volkey and our community that he will move his grinding operation to the new property. Mr. Newton believes that we in Selby Grove will agree to remove a covenant that reads that if the current property isn't used for the conduct of grinding operation, to conduct grinding operation, the property reverts to R1. We will not remove that covenant. The revised amendment Mr. Volkey sent us on Saturday is not a compromise. CLM can still cut down most of the trees and move their operation even closer to us. Not to mention, how is this council expected to vote on an amendment that they just heard with no opportunity to investigate? The four benefits Mr. Volkey would have you believe that would be achieved would benefit the state, the county, Mr. Newton, and assumingly somehow, Mr. Volkey, all at the cost of my community's Selby Grove. My wife and I have already discussed and realized that if the rezoning is passed, we will be forced to sell our home and move out of District 3, Region 4, and with any luck, all of Anarundel County. Any councilmember that intentionally introduces an amendment that detracts from the community and causes hardships for those that voted for them is not anyone that we want to represent us. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Holly Carland. I live in Selby Grove Community in Pasadena. I'm here again, as I was a couple weeks ago, to express my opposition to the initial rezoning of 201 Ember Drive, as well as the amendments and revisions to the same property that will be introduced tonight. Parenting today obviously presents its fair share of struggles, especially now that school's out and summer's in full swing. Getting our kids off their phones and outside is one of these struggles. To aid in that, earlier this year, my husband mounted a huge tree swing in our backyard for our four daughters. According to our kids, they say it's great and they love it, and they love being outside amongst the trees, seeing the groundhog, squirrels, occasional deer, and whatever else finds its way across our yard. They also say now that they are on summer break, if they go out during the day on a weekday, and even on Saturdays sometimes, that they'll come right back in. When I asked them why this is, they said very simply, because it's too loud outside and the beeping's annoying. Our house backs to a heavily wooded area with a running stream just at the base of our yard, yet it's still too loud to just enjoy hanging outside because for some reason, Anarundel County allowed a company to start grinding and shredding wood products right behind our home, which doesn't even make any sense to me. None of this was heard when the DeBaus owned the property due to the covenants that were in place, which are supposed to still be in place today, yet Mr. Newton, owner of CLM, consistently breaches these covenants that have been in place since 2006. Of course, just as a regular citizen, I'll admit that I don't know how to go about enforcing said covenants. Are we supposed to take CLM to court? Who pays for that lawyer, especially in this economy? While we appreciate the mediocre attempt to compromise, the proposed rezoning, as well as the revisions presented tonight, will still give Mr. Newton and CLM free range to do whatever it is they want without any covenants or restrictions in place. The removal of any of those trees brings more road noise to our community. Establishing further industrial use of that land brings an increase in the noise of heavy machinery operating. Oftentimes, it sounds like they're in our backyard as it is, as you heard. All of this is why I still absolutely oppose this amendment and its revisions to change anything with the zoning behind our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
Good evening. My name's Joseph Ross. I live at 1619 Old Mill Bottom Run, and I'm kind of new to this game, having recently moved to Anarundel County and came to this issue late. I think a lot of our community thought this was a settled matter, and I'm speaking regarding the rezoning of 161 Ferguson Road from RLD zoning to C2 zoning. I am opposed to this rezoning for four broad categories. Traffic, the current road network is overwhelmed and cannot absorb more traffic that additional commercial development would create. Environmental, you heard very eloquently the pleas and concerns about environmental impact. More impervious surface means more runoff, and more construction means loss of tree canopy. Your own established criteria for zoning changes, and while arguments can be made in both directions, I would say that this rezoning is not consistent with the immediate area. All of the commercial in this immediate area is either north of Ferguson and facing Route 50, or it's just on Ferguson but still faces Route 50 because Ferguson and Route 50 really run right next to each other. My third concern, my fourth concern, excuse me, is security. Anytime commercial property, you attract more traffic. It puts more people in the neighborhood. We do have a school in the neighborhood, St. Margaret's Day School, and unintended consequence of
Thank you, sir.
...of traffic. So just to sum up, I think that the rural designation is more consistent with the current nature of the neighborhood.
Thank you, sir. Before you start, I'm going to ask everybody, when it beeps, it's your two minutes, okay? Thank you. Sir?
My name is Nick Deutsch. I own property at 8250 Waterford Road, and I also reside at 8208 Old Mill Road in Pasadena. I am encouraging your support of Bill 2724 and 2824 for 201 Ember Drive. The commercial industrial property in that area is already large. You do have 100 right on the east side of Ember Drive. From what I've seen from the zoning changes, it does look like the predominant business that Mr. Newton wants to place is going to be towards that 100 side. It's not reasonable to expect that 201 Ember Drive would remain residential as the only access right now is literally through the commercial industrial park. So this area should be converted, as it is against Route 100, and I'm certainly for that as a neighbor directly, right next to that address.
Thank you, sir. Ma'am?
Good evening, and thank you for considering my request for rezoning. I am Jeannie Geisler. I own Geiser Point Marina. Geiser Point Marina has been in my family for 40 years and has been an active working marina since 1977. We are home to both commercial and recreational boaters. Our focus has always been to provide a clean, safe place for boaters of all kinds. When my father passed away in 2020, it was his wish that the When my father passed away in 2020, it was his wish that the marina continue to be owned and operated by a family. My goals and intentions are to honor this wish to the best of my ability. Rezoning from a nonconforming use to MA2 zoning status will allow me opportunities for income and financing so that I can continue to repair, renovate, and restore the property he worked a lifetime to build. My vision for Geiser Point Marina remains the same as my father's, a quiet, relaxing place for boaters to call home, a safe working marina for the surrounding residents, and a sustainable commercial business that continues to be an essential part of protecting Maryland's shorelines and waterfront communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Leahy?
Hello. Thank you again for the opportunity to be here. My name is Amy Leahy. I represent Greater Severna Park Council as their Vice President for Public Affairs, and I speak on behalf of the council tonight. I just would like to say that the amendments that have been put in by Ms. Fiedler have all been ones that have been supported by the Severna Park Council for the most part, particularly the ones that are in Severna Park. We definitely support those amendments. We ask that you all support the amendments. We know that in the past, there has been council manic courtesy applied to council people who are representing their areas, so the other council members traditionally will support what that council person is asking for. So we ask for that also. There are particular areas of concern that have been brought forward by the Office of Planning and Zoning that go against what the small area plans originally were about 20 years ago, and those are to try to keep the Severna Park area, especially that Ritchie Highway corridor, not so concrete and high building density. So we ask for that. We're also concerned about the schools in our area. If you've got commercial zoning that will become mixed use, that we will have a higher density, and we all know that the state of our schools right now is overcapacity. So we just ask that that be taken into consideration when you are passing this comprehensive zoning for Region IV. Thank you.
Thank you. This panel is dismissed. I'm going to call folks that weren't in the room when I originally called their name. I'm going to, well, Miss Sally Baldwin, Mark Phillips, Vicki Phillips, Jennifer Jackson, Christian Canby. Are you in the chambers now, any of you?
I'm Mark Phillips. I live at 314 Delma Avenue in Selby Grove. Councilman Volk, on nathanvolk.com, you wrote, and I quote, "I will continue to carefully review any development proposals to ensure we are protecting the character of our community and the quality of life for our citizens." Why are we here if you truly feel that way? Councilmembers, this amendment does not protect the character of our community and the quality of life for our citizens. It detracts from it. Councilman Volk, you also say you strive to save the remaining forest in our communities. If that's true, then why are we here? Why are you allowing the removal of 10 acres of forest? Just doesn't make sense. Rather than allow CLM to expand on that land, why don't they move to any number of the W2 zone land properties? Why expand and detract from the quality of life for our community? Why drive our property values down? Mr. Volk, you told us on June 11th that this was pretty much a done deal because the council members vote with other council members, mainly because they know less about your district than you do. Councilmembers, forest is forest regardless of district. Quality of life is quality of life regardless of district. The devaluation of homes due to changes in zoning and expansion is the same regardless of district.
Hi, my name is Vicki Phillips. I live at 314 Delma Avenue. Thank you, councilmembers, for hearing me in reference to my opposition, even with the newest amendments regarding the rezoning of property 201 Ember Drive. I have been a resident of the Selby Grove community for six years. It's the perfect location for me and my family. It is close to work and the beach. It's safe for my grandchildren to play, my husband and I to walk our dogs, and friendly. My house is a corner lot that backs to the forest. Honestly, I consider it to be a hidden gem of Pasadena. I welcome you to drive through it. You'll for sure be welcomed with a wave. I have visions of retiring in this home, drinking my coffee out back, piddling in the garden with birds chirping in the background. However, the vision is becoming muddled, muddled when I think of what the future holds if this bill continues and is passed. The sounds of birds chirping will be replaced with the construction equipment and noise from traffic of Route 10 and 100 worsening. With that, the wildlife that lives there, environmental concerns, haven't we already seen enough devastation along the Route 2 corridor? When will it stop? When every single area of remaining forest has been rezoned and removed? The investment of my house will for sure decrease in value when it is surrounded by an industrial business and highway noise. When everyone in my neighborhood purchased their homes, they did so with the existing zoning in mind. This would be the worst type of bait and switch for all these families and our community. Our entire quality of life will be affected. Put yourself in our shoes. There is more than enough reason to stop this bill from passing, as it will negatively affect all those who are already living there. Shortly, there are other areas in the county that are already zoned for this purpose. Mr. Volk, in your most recent email, you noted how the rezoning helps the community, but of the four reasons stated, none actually help my community, Selby Grove community.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hi, good evening. Sally Baldwin, I'm here on behalf of Jeannie Geisler and Geiser Point Marina. I'm here to ask for your support in rezoning Geiser Point Marina. It's at 7831 and 7857 Southwest Road in Pasadena, from R2 to MA2. That's Amendment 27 and Bill 27, and Amendment 31 and Bill 28. This commercial marina has been an integral part of the Bayside Beach community in Pasadena for decades. It's been providing benefits to its community in a unique location on Bodkin Creek, providing access to protect and restore shorelines, and access to local inland boat owners who want to have a safe place to enjoy their boats. Ms. Geisler recently inherited the property from her father, and she's committed to continuing its current operations peacefully and respecting the neighborhood in which it's located. That commitment includes gaining the support of the Community Association, the Improvement Association of Bayside Beach. Ms. Geisler voluntarily agreed to covenants on her property at the Improvement Association of Bayside Beach's request. This rezoning conforms with the Anaronda County General Development Plan, so I'd ask for your support in voting yes on those two amendments. Thank you.
Sir?
My name is CJ Canby. I live in Rivera Beach community. I'm captain of FE Miss Paul. I'm a commercial crabber on Chesapeake Bay. Geiser Point Marina is an integral part of my business as a commercial crabber. I live in Rivera Beach. Anaronda County itself has very limited access to the water for commercial purposes, commercial watermen. We have just absolutely almost no access to be able to harvest crabs and seafood from the bay, so this marina allows me to work and continue my operations as a waterman on Chesapeake Bay, and I am in favor of the rezoning of the marina and ask for your yes in rezoning the marina.
Thank you. This panel is dismissed. I have just a few more names that were, we called earlier in the night that weren't present yet. Robert Heimbuch, Maureen Carr York, Debbie Ladato, Tracy Nicole. Are you all in the chambers this time? Okay. Yeah, you were, but it was farther down on my list. So come on up, come on up, though. Come on up. Maureen Carr York's not here, right? You turn it on, right? Okay. Go ahead.
Hi, good evening. I'm Debbie Ladato, and I live at 2106 Bayfront Terrace in Annapolis, and I want to thank you all for all your demanding work on the county's comprehensive zoning plan. I know it's no easy task, so. I'm for the opportunity to speak to you one last time on Bill 2824, as it pertains to the proposed rezoning of Safe Harbor Yacht Club, and a special thanks to Councilwoman Fiedler for her tiring efforts on this, too. When our group of residents met with Safe Harbor, we asked them, why do you want to rezone to an MA2? And their response was, so we can bring our boat tail and our forklift into compliance. With an MA3 zoning, Safe Harbor can apply for a variance to achieve those goals. They have already made updates to the yacht club without the need for an MA2 zoning. A resident community group has been working with Safe Harbor, and they're turning to attempt to negotiate the covenants restrictions. The negotiations did not end with a resolution that would be in the best interest of the Pedicry Point community. We also have concerns, as we have stated before, that even if we could, could agree with Safe Harbor, if they decided to sell the property, future owners could decide to do things differently. In addition, covenants are not enforceable by zoning, county zoning, but become a court issue, putting the burdened cost of enforcement on our small community or even an individual After much consideration and time, the group feels it is in the best interest of the community to move forward with the request for the amendment to have Safe Harbor remain zoned MA3. So I ask you, please vote in favor of the amendment to keep Safe Harbor zoned MA3, and thank you for your time, consideration, and especially public service. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ma'am? Go ahead.
I wanted to have somebody go before.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Maureen Carr York, and I'm the president of the Greater Severna Park Council. I've been here a few times before, mentioning a few of our many concerns, and I would ask you to support the amendments that have been introduced by Ms. Fiedler this day. They address a lot of those concerns. One is the attempt to rezone parts of Ritchie Highway on the west side between White's Road and West Pasadena Road from residential, or in some instances, small business district to commercial. That would be devastating to that neighborhood, and you've heard from several of their residents, including the lady to my left who will be speaking shortly. I also want to address another concern of ours, which is the proposed change from commercial to mixed use for the major shopping centers in the heart of Severna Park. Right now, they function very well. We have a great community shopping area, and we are hoping that you will allow that to remain. And so, thank you very much. If you have any questions, I'll be here.
Thank you. Ma'am?
Thank you. My name is Tracy Nicole. I live in Severna Park. I'm actually here on behalf of the Cypress Landing community, of which I am the president of the Homeowners Association, and I would just like to concur with what Ms. Carr York just went over, and we ask that you support the amendments being offered by Ms. Fiedler with regard to the addresses of 236 Ritchie Highway, 238, 242, and 302 Ritchie Highway, so that they would remain designated as small business and not C1, commercial. Thank you for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Julia Langfit. I live at 211 Bayfront Terrace. I am the next door neighbor to Safe Harbor Yacht Club at Pedicry Point. I'm opposed to the change in zoning from an MA3 to an MA2 for Safe Harbor, because all they care about is building larger boat storage racks and getting bigger forklifts. They are not about bringing jobs to Anaronda County. They're about creating revenue for themselves. The previous three owners of Pedicry Point Yacht Club have asked for an MA2, and the Office of Planning and Zoning rejected their requests, but suddenly, in October of 2023, there was a new opinion that said that the surrounding neighborhood was conducive to light industry, and that they should change this zoning to fit what they've been doing for a year. As a veterinarian, if this gets passed, that will make me feel that there is precedent that I can practice veterinary medicine from my basement and ask for forgiveness, not Please support the amendment and keep this MA3 as it has been for 50 years. Thank you.
Thank you. This panel is dismissed. I'm going to call the last few names that I called earlier tonight, and then we will open it up to anyone who did not sign up in advance. Lisa Russell, Frank Langfit, Elsa Bennett, John Bennett, John Rollin, and Ernest Tucker.
Ma'am, go ahead. My name is Lisa Russell, and I live at 2122 Bayfront Terrace, Annapolis, Maryland. I'm appearing again to ask you to please support an amendment to Bill 2824 so that Pedicry Point Yacht Club will not be upzoned to a MA2 light commercial marina. Pedicry Point Yacht Club was zoned MA3 prior to the change proposed in this bill, which I understand only occurred because the property's owners called the Anaronda County Office of Planning and Zoning and requested the change during the past year. Essentially, an administrative mistake on the part of the Office of Planning and Zoning has landed us where we are now. The yacht club must maintain its MA3 zoning in order to be compatible with its surrounding neighborhood. Members of our neighborhood were asked by Amanda Fiedler to negotiate with the current owners of the property to resolve the zoning issue and come up with a compromise, including restricted covenants on the land. We have tried very hard and spent countless hours on this effort, but our goals are too different. The new owner is a $2 billion for-profit corporation headquartered in Texas with a goal of satisfying profitability requirements and its member customers, whereas we are a quiet residential community, which has had a neighborhood yacht club since the 60s. My neighbors have already written to you and spoken tonight and entered into the legislative portal the many other issues relative to Safe Harbor, so I'll just emphasize two items. Number one, Safe Harbor's apparent lack of due diligence when they purchased the property to understand how the property they bought was zoned, which is why it was priced the way it was when they bought it. And two, their noncompliance with existing zoning and critical area laws ever since then. I'll just end with asking you to please do whatever you can to protect the residents of Anaronda County. Thank you. Thank you.
Sir?
Hi, I'm Jack Coca. I live right across the street from the marina. And if it's not obvious to all you by now, Safe Harbor does not play by the rules. That seems to be popular these days, and they go along right with it. They have big corporate, not only Pedicry Point, but other marinas that they own along the west coast, and we have provided you with litigations going on with Safe Harbor on a number of these in the portal. So it should be easy for you. So you either vote for the community, Broadneck Peninsula, Anaronda County, and you vote to keep MA3, or you vote not to keep MA3 and go along with the lawlessness that they've been perpetrating on us and other communities. It's up to you guys.
Thank you, sir. Sir?
John Rollin, 8270 Waterford Road. I'm here tonight to support the zoning change from C4 to C3 at this property. This area is completely engulfed in businesses. It makes complete and absolute sense to do so. I've been an advocate for Anaronda County for, you know, my whole life. I've done a lot of good work in Anaronda County, building trades, you know, supporting schools, and I think that what my idea is to create on this property will go a long way, and I think it'd be incredibly beneficial to Anaronda County's economy. Please consider this, and thank you.
Thank you, sir. Sir?
Yes, thank you. My name is Frank Langfitt. I live at 2114 Bayfront Terrace. I also would like to see the Safe Harbor property continue to be zoned MA3. And I, as I've said before, I think this is, a lot of this is about rule of law and democracy. It's a lot more than a zoning issue. Governments aren't supposed to, as others have said, reward companies or people who ignore zoning regulations. If the council approves the upzoning, I think it will send a message to other commercial property owners that zoning regulations maybe really don't matter that much. Councilwoman Fiedler has helped us a lot. We really appreciate what she's done. She also told us that in a conversation with Safe Harbor, their executives noted that the community membership that we all enjoy and we pay for, we support the yacht club, could be canceled under any zoning. We've just been, you know, exercising our First Amendment rights, but it sounded like what we got returned was a veiled threat. Now, some members of the community are actually a little worried about speaking up, because they're afraid Safe Harbor might lock us out. Safe Harbor has said it won't retaliate, but we had to ask them to promise that in writing. Pedicry Point is the only community in America that's had trouble working with Safe Harbor. Town of Point Royal has sued Safe Harbor over violating zoning by building docks there. And I guess as you vote today, I just ask you to please consider which you value more, the voters and constituents who've chosen to make a home here in Anorundel County, or the share price of a real estate investment trust based in Dallas. Thank you very much.
Thank you. This panel is dismissed. We've now gotten through the folks that signed up in advance. I will open this public hearing up to people who did not sign up in advance but care to speak. I'd ask you to come up. And we have six seats. State your name and address for the record. You have two minutes, and just please respect the buzzer, please. Thank you.
Sure thing. Karen Royer, 370 Harwin Drive in Severna Park. I testified in May on behalf of the Berrywood Environmental Committee against many instances of upzoning proposed for our area, and circulated my testimony to the larger community afterwards. The volume of positive comments that I received was astounding. There isn't a single person in District 5 that thinks that our community can withstand additional development. The president of the Greater Severna Park Council, Maureen, asked me to speak again this evening to reiterate our basic message, that our peninsulas are currently developed beyond what they can handle, and that the Ritchie Highway, College Parkway, and Veterans Highway corridors are overstressed by gridlocked traffic, overcrowded schools, and water quality in our creeks and rivers that is so degraded that it often precludes human contact after a rainfall. Families who live in our communities do not want their quality of everyday life diminished by the degradation that upzoning brings, so we ask the council to vote in favor of the amendments to Bills 2824 and 2724, as submitted by Amanda Fiedler. Roadways on peninsulas do not have alternate routes. We are forever limited by the land configuration unless you plan to travel by boat. We currently sit through multiple cycles at each traffic light on Ritchie Highway, BNA Boulevard, and Benfield Road, even in non-rush hour times with no accidents. These conditions are the result of development that continues to be approved despite the lack of infrastructure in our area to handle it. Adding additional development in these areas is negligent and irresponsible to the citizens as well as to the environment. We ask the council again to vote in favor of Ms. Fiedler's amendments to Bills 2824 and 2724. Thank you.
Good evening, council members. I'm Molly Knype, the CEO of the YWCA of Annapolis and Anorundel County, located at 1517 Ritchie Highway in Arnold. I have served in this role for over 16 years with a team of 50 employees, providing emergency response services to victims of intimate partner violence. We touch the lives of 10,000 women, men, and a lot of children every year. In addition to providing the county's only domestic violence safe house, partnering to provide the state's only trafficking safe house for youth, staff attorneys, licensed therapy, hospital accompaniment, and operation of the county's 24-hour domestic violence and sexual assault hotlines, we partner to provide comprehensive wellness services such as massage, acupuncture, yoga, and physical therapy for survivors. The zoning change being requested is for a small portion of our 7.5-acre property located at 1481 BNA Boulevard in Arnold, with a driveway centered between other businesses or organizations, including the YWCA Administrative Building, a temple, and a post office. The zoning request is simply to allow a small business on the property. This property has its own driveway and does not abut residential properties belonging to other homeowners. We are not looking at additional development. In fact, completed a complete renovation of the 1940s four-square on the property. This zoning change provides the opportunity for the YWCA to charge rent to a partner wellness service provider while also extending mission-driven services to YWCA clients who have experienced trauma. Further, the revenue supports the balance of our services specifically to our most vulnerable Anorundel County residents. I would urge your support of the zoning change. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the council. Phil Dale's here from Dale's Associates Land Use Law and Licensing Law. I'm testifying here tonight on behalf of Safe Harbor, as they've been so badly maligned. And I've heard the members of the surrounding community making their testimony over the past few meetings, including this one, and I've not said anything about my view with regard to their misrepresentation of the history of this request for rezoning, or the timing of our efforts to, to offer resolutions and compromise, or the impacts of the request of rezoning. First, I have to say that it's, it's rich, that they're complaining that there's been not enough time to correct the concerns that they've had, since we've been engaged publicly and transparently in this process to rezone the property for over a year at all of the small area committees and at the planning advisory board, and we didn't hear from Safe Harbor directly about their concerns until well after the end of May. And after an initial meeting between the groups in early June, we have emailed the community four or five times without any response, you know, offering solutions. And ultimately, we offered the covenant, which was the only solution that they would accept with a very absolute stance on that. We didn't hear back from them on that either, until this Thursday or Friday. And in that short amount of time, we have offered in writing, and have now delivered this evening, a signed covenant, giving over 20 restrictions on the uses for which they are concerned. There are no uses from which they're, that would come from the MA2 rezoning that they are not protected from by this covenant. Ultimately, there were only three issues remaining, all of which we were provided no rationale as to the reason those issues were not resolved or would cause concern for the community, and we consented even to the last, two of the last three that we found unreasonable. The third was just about the location of the buildings that would not be affected by the rezoning.
Thank you. Ma'am?
Hi, my name is Michelle Moore. I'm a resident at Bayside Beach, 2124 Lake Drive. And while I appreciate the time and efforts that our board and the Geisler Marina took to negotiate and reach a mutually agreed-upon set of covenants, I don't think they go far enough to address safety concerns that I shared both online and also as input to the board. And so I'm hoping that the members here will expand, if possible, hopefully it's possible, you can expand those covenants to include the safety concerns, mainly that the commercial vehicles that will be coming into our community, they are carrying large loads, and they are typically on commercial roads, and now that they're going to be in a residential community, we have people walking, there are dogs, we have children, we have school buses, and those loads could actually, you know, come onto these little streets and crush people. And I just think those safety issues have not been addressed with the covenants that have been proposed. And the weight and load, the size capacity for using these smaller roads in the residence, residential community, that where there should be some restricted limits on what size and those weights are coming and leaving for our community with the small streets and turnarounds. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
Good evening. David Katz, first off, Madam Chair, members of the council, David Katz, attorney with Katz Day, 2410 Evergreen Road. I'm here this evening to speak in support of the proposed rezoning of 201 Ember Drive. It makes absolutely no sense for the property to remain exclusively residentially zoned. The property is accessed exclusively via industrial zone property. The industrial uses, including the wood waste facility, are nearly 50 years old, predate many of the homes that are located close by, but the proposed rezoning by Councilman Volkey would still maintain a significant buffer between the wood waste facility, as it, as it may perhaps in the future, limitedly expand, and a buffer with the residential community. The proposal is in accordance with the comp plan and the county's desire to expand recycling operations in the county. This is one of only two wood waste facility, recycling facilities. This is a much-needed product for its residents, for the, for the county's residents. I think it's also important to mention that the proposed rezoning, should the wood waste facility expand in the future, it would still have to go through the special exception process. It would still have to prove in front of the administrative hearing officer that its use is not detrimental to public health, welfare, safety. So I think that the community is well-protected, and it's a perfect proposed use and proposed zoning for the property. Thank you.
Sir?
Sorry about that. Wasn't sure if it was on me or not. Good evening. My name is Randall Jobb. I live at 8178 Forest Glen Drive, Pasadena, Maryland. Thank you, Madam Chair, and distinguished council members, for allowing me a chance to talk about a very important property in Pasadena. My son, Logan, and I are local business owners, and we recently purchased a 9.1-acre property located along Mountain Road where it meets Waterford Road. We have been looking for a piece of land like this for some time, and we are excited about the prospect of turning a long-term dream into a reality. Zoning this property C1 makes sense, and its location at the intersection of two major roadways not only benefit any prospective businesses that might end up here, it makes complete sense from a planning and land use perspective. We have more than 100 linear feet of frontage on Mountain Road and approximately 600 feet of direct frontage along Maryland 648, known as Waterford Road. Properties to the east are currently zoned C1. One of the adjoining properties is currently being rezoned from R1 to C1 as part of this comprehensive planning process. The parcel to the northeast is zoned C1, and the two parcels directly across Mountain Road are zoned C4. Our request makes sense, and it is justified by all the commercially zoned properties around us, the fact that we are at two major roadways, and the fact that R1 is no longer a viable land use. We respectfully request your support on this, of this amendment. We thank our councilman, Mr. Volkey, and we thank all of you for your time, dedication, and helping us to serve the residents of Pasadena and Anorundel County. Thank you.
Thank you. This panel is dismissed. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to testify on Bills 27, 24, and 2824 at this Thank you. Sir? State your name and address for the record. You have two minutes.
Matt Bitner, 535 Marlin Spike, Severna Park. I'm here in regarding the Ember Drive property. I'm a contractor. I have been dealing with that business and the old owners and the new owners for the last 35 years, and I'm here to testify from what I've seen, the changes of this property. It has gone from something years ago that was just disorganized, disorganized and thrown together, and every year that has been bought by this new company, it has gotten very organized over there, neat and a very well-run business. I, you know, I'm for the rezoning that they're looking for. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, good evening, council. Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair. My name is Mike Jacobs. I live at 8246 Bodkin Avenue, Pasadena, Maryland. I'm here tonight to support the Geisler Marina rezoning. I've had a business, or I have a business, I've been operating for 35 years in Pasadena. Did my whole life in Pasadena, 58 years, and I can just say that the Geisler's family has had a great reputation, a great business. I know Jeannie is going to continue that and keep the business running and keep the community dialogue going and making sure that things are, are happy with the community, as well as making sure that the, the business itself is at its all-time best. So again, I'm here to support that, and I'm hoping that you support that as well.
Good evening. My name is Paul Spadaro, and I'm representing the Magathie River Association, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. The Magathie River Association represents 30 communities, is strongly opposed to the amendment to Bill 2824 relating to 201 Ember Drive. Chesapeake Landscape Materials is seeking your support to change the zoning from R1 to W2 industrial. This amendment will allow for a woodship dyeing facility to expand into 14 acres along the upper Magathie River, which is the only creek in the Magathie River that supports a robust yellow perch spawn. MRA has serious concerns about the expansion of the woodship dyeing facility, and considers this type of dyeing industry facility a direct threat to the health of the upper Magathie Lake Waterford County Park in the Magathie River. The county recommended keeping the R1 zoning, and we strongly agree. This amendment will push the heavy industry into a residential area and will destroy about 10 acres of forest at an extremely environmentally sensitive headwaters of the Magathie River, which enters directly into Lake Waterford. Consider this, the county is preparing to spend $5 to $10 million to dredge Lake Waterford to fix problems associated with overdevelopment. Why should this county council consider expanding a woodship dyeing facility, activity, only to undo the $5 or $10 million that you're going to invest to improve the health of the county park at Lake Waterford? Finally, because the area is in Lake Waterford Habitat Protected Area for Yellow Perch, state and county code requires county to maintain and increase forested handy, forested cover, and keeping that zoning is consistent with it.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is Joshua Jacobs. I live at 8157 Bodkin Avenue. I run a marine construction company that utilizes Geisler Point Marina, and I support the rezoning of the marina. I would like to continue using it.
Thank you. Sir?
Thank you. My name's Eric Marburger. I'm, live at 187 Topec Drive in Severna Park. I live close to the 201 Ember Drive, and I support the W2 zoning of the property. I think residential uses at the end of this very busy, busy commercial neighborhood adjacent to Route 10 and Route 100 would not be compatible with the neighborhood and cause numerous concerns, and would be incompatible with the commercial industrial neighborhood adjacent to Route 100 and Route 10. And I would just like to also echo the fact of the first gentleman who said that the business that they run over there is exceptionally clean, it's well-run, it's very safe business, and I support that. Thank you.
Sir?
My name's Aaron. I live in Shelby Grove. I'm also speaking about 201 Ember. A couple of the phrases that have been used may not have fully explained to you the process. They put a tree in a grinder, which backs up to our neighborhood. My neighbor played a audio clip. The thing that wasn't really clear with that is that was at 10 o'clock at night, so this isn't a nine-to-five operation. They've also said that this is a commercial area, which makes sense until you drive from 10:00 to 11:00. They've also said that this is a commercial area, which makes sense until you drive down it. It's a bunch of storage lots, so it's not work being done there. There's car parking, there's vehicle parking, there's boat storage, which are all commercial, but it's not making any noise, they're parking lots. And then when you come out of that road, Waterford Road, you have to go around Lake Waterford Park and come out onto 100. So there's not good traffic pattern for big vehicles to be coming in and out of there to begin with. So to add to that grinding operation and to pose it as we're just going to move our operation is disingenuous. They're going to put another grinder on that property. And so instead of having one tree go into something the size of a semi-truck and come out as wood chips, they're going to do two of them. And they act like that's not going to impact our values or it's not going to create all these other problems with the watershed. So trying to use flowery language that it's a wood recycling project, it's disingenuous to what's happening.
Thank you, sir. This panel is dismissed. Is there anyone else in the audience that is prepared to speak on either Bills 27, 24, or 28, 24 at this time? We have six seats.
Sarah Warner and I am at 311 Delma. And as you've heard from my husband, my neighbors, my friends, we are and continue to be opposed to 201 Amber Drive being changed over. So we urge you to hear, all of us that were here this evening, all of the petitions that were signed, all of the people that unfortunately for one reason or another were not able to be here this evening, but echo our same sentiments. Please do not allow the change to 201 Amber Drive.
Good evening. My name is Giovanni Santaboni. My address is 161 Ferguson Road in Annapolis. Thank you for the opportunity to speak once more in front of this council in favor of the rezoning for the parcel to C2. There's been some activity on social media recently about the amendment introduced to rezonate this property. I recognize the concerns of the people that in good faith testified or submitted comments. I regret though that information circulated online omitted important publicly available information that would have placed this amendment in its rightful context or everything available on the county's website. I will begin with the environmental impact. The parcel is approximately 10.7 acres in size, but that does not mean that 10 acres of soil open to development. Six and a half acres are protected under the forest conservation easement, that's 60%. There is a massive buffer with very steep slopes that protects everyone in the direction of Old Millbottom Road. Now doing the math, this leaves approximately four acres only available for potential future development, a good portion of which is already cleared and developed. Therefore, the environmental impact of this zoning change is very small. No one is going to raise 10 acre of forest to the ground despite what many would like to believe. Moreover, the place is the sole residential property on Ferguson Road and it's the only property on the access road of Route 50 at Exit 28 that is neither owned by the state of Maryland nor its own commercial. This is not to become an island in a commercial property protruding south into St. Margaret Residential Community. Because at most it is the reverse, a residential island in the middle of no residential uses and therefore not to lead to spread for commercial zoning. Our truly direct neighbors are the folks at AAFNG, the Gun Club, as many know them, with whom we share a long boundary line that is unprotected by any buffer whatsoever, who by the way are publicly supporting this application. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Jeff O'Brien. I live at 1710 Transway. I'm kind of opposing the Ferguson Road, Broadneck Road, Baydale Road development zoning changes. Infrastructure in the area is not there. I would be welcome to these changes if we had better infrastructure, better travel, better traffic, better ways to get on and off of 50. We all know that 50 is backed up. Also, by changing the zoning, you're getting rid of lots of trees and those trees are keeping noise and traffic volumes down. Where my house is situated, in the summertime, it is very quiet. I live within eye shot of a bus depot. I don't hear that in the summertime. When the wintertime comes and all the leaves fall, I do hear it, but I'm not outside generally because it's cold. I also just ask you to think of the Magathie River and the pollution for some of these developments. Supporting the Magathie River Association, it's already been a problem and we're trying to get it to be better. Thank you.
Sir?
Hello. I am Britt Griswold. I live at 823 Holly Drive East, Annapolis, Maryland, 21409. Tonight I am representing the Broadneck Council of Communities. I want to mention three items tonight. First, we support Amanda's amendment to keep the yacht club as MA3. I think you've heard plenty of testimony that the owners of that property now don't appear to be reliable or pay attention to the laws. Secondly, the Mulberry Hill Road upzoning from R1 to R2. If all 40 of the blocks of that area were converted to R2, you might be looking as much as 100 homes eventually. Right now they're asking for 12 parcels to be changed, but that's spot zoning. BBC tries to be consistent in our advocacy for land use and infrastructure. The current land use and infrastructure in this area, it doesn't really support additional housing. This is in the critical area mostly. In particular, septic is not planned for this area. If we were to have additional 100 homes up against the creeks down there, it would not be a good thing. Okay. And finally, and bigly, as it were, 161 Ferguson Road. Broadneck Council would urge Councilman Volkey and Councilwoman Hummer to withdraw the proposal to upzone Ferguson. Amanda Fiedler, whose district this is in, is in opposition, as are the surrounding communities she has consulted with. Please respect her judgment. Despite the claims made in previous council meetings, Ferguson Road is not surrounded by commercial zoning.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Suzanne George, Pasadena, representing seven resident constituents on Waterford Road, who emailed Mr. Volkey in strong opposition of the zoning change from R1 to C3 at 8270 Waterford Road. Testimony by the new property owner said he recognized living at property with C4 next door isn't ideal. We know this more than many. He said he planned to run his auto business from the property and turn the house into an office. This change to a mobile business, meaning he does not plan to do it at the property. So we weren't sure why need commercial zoning? No one asks for C4 or C3 unless they plan much bigger things now or down the road. We can park a work truck at our home, run a business from our home office without the need for commercial zoning. Plan use now can quickly change, especially if it's sold to a commercial company like we have next to us with commercial tenants of all kinds. We are just a couple doors down and we've heard before, this won't affect you. We and our neighbors are shocked and incredibly disappointed that Mr. Volkey would change his original amendment, keeping property R1 and support more commercial zoning, sandwiching us. We did request a phone call, but he met with the new neighbor at his property and we and our neighbors discussed it and we felt that no good could come by attending this meeting to beg the new neighbor not to apply for commercial zoning on our street. Once you get commercial zoning, the sky's the limit. We've seen 50 years of zoning changes, 52 to be exact. Would we ever think that we would be where we are now with the commercial C4 zoning right next to us that used to be R1? I grew up with a little girl next door, played with her. The Jobs were great neighbors back then and unfortunately that property is now C4 with every kind of commercial activity you can imagine.
Thank you.
My name is Julie Santaboni and I live at 161 Ferguson Road in Annapolis. And I'm here to ask you to please adopt the amendment for C2 zoning. Neither my husband nor I are real estate developers. We did not purchase our property with any other intent other than to live in it and raise our family there. Although all our immediate neighbors share a similar zoning use with us on paper, the gun club with which we share a large property boundary has a zoning use that is only allowed by special exception in C4 highway commercial zoning. And the neighboring parcels owned by SHA are exempt from all zoning restrictions. A zoning designation on a map is absolutely meaningless if the land is legally allowed to be used for another use. About eight years ago, we had to hire a land use attorney, long before we ever heard of the GDP or comprehensive zoning. The problems we hired him for have not been resolved, they've gotten worse. Our unbuffered, extensive, and unique border with a gun club makes the residential use of our land incompatible with their operations. The best resolution for us and for them is for our parcel to be rezoned commercial. And we hope that our rezoning effort might also help our neighbors at the Sheehy Automotive Dealerships to have the opportunity to have more ground space that they so direly didn't need. So delivery vehicles no longer need to unload in the middle of Ferguson Road, as you can see happens from the photos that I submitted today. For us and our neighbors, rezoning simply makes sense. In addition, it makes sense from a planning perspective to concentrate development on an interchange with an interstate highway where there's already extensive C4 development. Our property is at a highway exit. It is not surrounded by farms and water. Finally, I want to thank Councilman Volkey and Councilwoman Hummer for bringing forward the amendment and I would ask the rest of the council to please adopt it. Thank you.
Thank you. This panel is dismissed.
I'm here to ask you to support the rezoning for 850 A and B Ritchie Highway. I submitted something in writing, so I won't go through that. I'm also here because I co-owned some property with my brothers in Mulberry Hill. And years ago, I used to drive, I delivered mail and I'd drive down St. Margaret's Road, down to Whitehall. And I would have, there was a property that I had to go in to take a package. I had to open the gate and drive past the slave quarters to put the package at the door. And then I would go down to Holly Beach Farm and I would have to go in, drive around the big white circle, go in and put the mail on a gold tray. And it was very triggering. And a couple of weeks ago, I went to a hearing about Mulberry Hill and there was a map showing Providence and Mulberry Hill, the other side of Mulberry Hill, where we own property. And it was so triggering to see that, to see that on this side where the majority of people were descendants of enslaved people and there's this like invisible line where there's now a concrete fence. And these are the people, majority of people of non-descendants, descendants of non-enslaved people. So I think what I'm asking is that you look at it and realize that some people have had entitlements because of where they live. And so I'm asking you to just be just and fair. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am?
My name is Jean Olson. I live in St. Margaret's and I am opposed to the Ferguson change for the environmental reasons that were expressed earlier, as well as the traffic, which is sometimes unbearable. I don't think that it would benefit our community in any way, shape, or form to have more commercial there. I'm sorry that the people bought that property and it's not working out for them, but I'm opposed.
Sir?
Yes, ma'am. I'm Hunter Reed. I'm here to testify in favor of the Amber Drive property rezoning. It's currently a facility that is used not only by contractors. I'm a resident of Severna Park and a contractor, I'm sorry, and I'm involved in stormwater management and groundwater remediation. Been a contractor for 43 years. So this property has been a recycling facility for a long time. It's adjacent to Route 100 and an industrial area. It fits the use. It also fits Anarona County because Anarona County currently handles a bulk of the wood recycling at their Millersville facility and other facilities. And I can tell you that the concerns are valid. The runoff can be managed. There could be no discharge from the property, which I know, I use the facility and there is no runoff discharges. But groundwater concerns can be addressed easily also with current technology because I've been involved in concrete plants that use this technology for their runoff and their groundwater discharge. I've been involved in mine reclamation where they've treated groundwater from mines. It's very easily done. So the concerns are, you know, valid, but the solutions are valid also. I just want to add that. And I want to add too, that in a cost-benefit ratio, Anarona County has to look at this because when you use the landfill, the cost to the residents and the taxpayers is much greater than this facility costs. So I want to look at that as managers for the overall county budget and this can be done without harm. I just want to say that. The facility I'll add at Millersville is within 200 feet of Severna Run. So it's a perfect example that stormwater can be managed and groundwater discharges can be managed also. If anybody's been to Millersville, you'd see that.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Steven Laster, 102 Cedar Road. I am partner and operations manager at Chesapeake Landscape Materials since coming aboard at Chesapeake. We, I'll back up my background, I'm former military, I'm a veteran. I've worked for Maryland Environmental Service, a state agency. So the vigorous training I've had to go through in my past has led me to my career today with sediment and erosion control, stormwater management protection. Again, I was trained through the state of Maryland, carried me on through Anarona County with the business here in favor of the 201 Amber Road. You know, we just had an inspection here less than three weeks ago. The only thing that got me is because some of my guys failed to throw trash, all their trash in dumpster. Since we've been there, we've had zero complaints from MDE, who is vigorously there whenever they want to be and it's a lot. As far as the noise pollution at 10 o'clock at night, I'm there till 7:00. Sometimes I stay tonight there and I can promise, nobody's working there till 10 o'clock at night. I am, in my office, making sure we get our orders put in for the next day, taking care of customers, taking care of, you know, getting contracts put in for Anarona County and the state of Maryland, producing soils, producing, you know, stormwater remediation projects for different customers and throughout the county. So again, I'm in favor. Thank you.
Ma'am?
I'm Heather Messick. I live at 313 Delma Avenue. I can look across the street and see their property. I can hear their property from inside my house with the windows and doors closed. I am opposed to the 201 Amber residential change. Now, a couple of things that I find funny is the fact that they say that no noise has happened after 5:00 or after the covenants were in place. That's incorrect because when we brought it up on June 11th, I believe, when we met with Wayne Newton and these fine folks, Wayne said, "Oh yeah, sorry about that. We were just running all night long because we had some stuff to do. But when you called us, we stopped." I shouldn't have to call. If there's covenants in place, that should protect our neighborhood. Oh, speaking about neighborhood, there's two folks back there that said they're our neighbors. They're not. They live two miles away, eight miles away. They're not our neighbors. The definition of neighbors, this is funny, is someone who lives nearby, usually in a house or apartment next door, walking distance to your house. They do not live walking distance next to my house. Everybody who was opposed to this... Everybody who was opposed to this, they can walk to my house. They come to my house. They come to my backyard. We have drinks. We throw a cornhole. We enjoy our outside. Can we enjoy the outside when we hear all the noise out there? No. Do we turn our music up a little louder? Yes. Should we have to? No. Now, I appreciate that you made those changes in the amendment before it was introduced. Those are great, but I'm just against all of it. Who once added noise to their backyard? I bought this house, what, 11 years ago, 12 years ago, with the intent of, there's woods there, there's woods there. They aren't going to build because the Magathie River is right there. It's protected. It's an environmental area. And now, I'm running my business. I made an investment in this house. That's my business. I'm raising a teenage son, a husband, and two dogs, raising all of them.
Thank you. Thank you. This panel is dismissed. I think we're done. I'm going to do a last call for anyone. We have six chairs. If we're going to, any more testimony on Bill 2724 and 2824? This is the last call. Sir?
Good evening. I'm Wayne Newton, owner and of property at 201 Amber, and managing member of the partnership for the business. My partner and I, who is here, but in essence of time, we're going to not bring the other three people up to have a conversation, say the same thing I'm going to say. My partner and I bought this business in 2020. It's a 50-year-old recycling facility. We create green, we take green waste from the local communities and local businesses, and we turn them around into environmentally sustainable products that are used in the stormwater management treatment train. That's what we've done. You've heard a couple of our customers and neighbors come up and talk about what a good job we've done. We've done nothing but clean it up. You've heard our operations manager come up and say he was from Maryland Environmental Service. He's done a great job of cleaning this place up. We have a facility that produces environmentally sustainable materials that most of the people in this room probably use in their yards. Mulch. I heard Mr. Speder talk about the dyed facilities. Those dyed mulches go in your front yard. They're not environmentally hazardous. We have a zero discharge, for the most part. I can't tell you we don't have any discharge at all. On a large rainstorm, we probably do. But we recycle all of our water. We are the facility in this county that is allowing the county to recycle its green waste instead of putting it in a landfill. And I would ask for your support of amendment, of the amendment for 201 Amber. I want to thank Mr. Volkey for his support and his work in this. It's been a lot of work. I appreciate what you've done. And I would thank the council for your support, if you choose to do that. Just a couple minor items. As I said, we are a natural green waste recycler. We're only one of two in the entire county. The other one is in Odenton. The state of Maryland licenses us to do this work specifically to keep the recyclable materials out of the landfill. I appreciate your help. I look for, I appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
Justin Redman. We're a neighboring property owner to 201 Amber Drive. We're at 8239 Baltimore Annapolis Boulevard. We have done quite a bit of business with the old owner and the new owner. And to say that it is a night and day difference over there with them trying to take care of the property and clean it up and make a very, very good-looking business. The neighborhood is mostly all commercial. I think there's only a handful of residential on our road. And I think that a residential zone would not be compatible with the commercial industrial neighborhood in between Route 100 and 10.
Thank you. This panel is dismissed. The joint public hearing on Bill 27-24 and Bill 2824 is now closed. I have gotten a note, this council would like to take a brief comfort break. I'm sorry? Okay.
Just to close out the public hearing, Bill Number 2724, an ordinance concerning general development plan, Region 4 Plan, and Bill Number 2824, an ordinance concerning comprehensive zoning, Region 4. We'll now take a 10-minute break. We'll be back.
Good evening and thank you for your patience. The council is prepared to go starting into amendments. Is the administration prepared for us to take that route? Or do you have any opening remarks?
I don't think we want to waste any time.
Very good, thank you. Appreciate that. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 22 to Bill 2724.
Amendment Number 22. This amendment changes the planned land use for the properties known as 8222 Ventnor Road and 1581 Marco Drive Pasadena from rural to residential low density.
Mr. Volkey, this is your amendment. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a reversion amendment to the existing zoning. This amendment takes these properties back to their existing zoning. They did not request a zoning change. The property owners never sought this. This was something that was prepared and recommended by staff. So with that, this would revert to the existing zoning. Move the amendment.
Second.
Would the administration like to comment on Amendment Number 22?
Sure. Christina Pampa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. So 8222 Ventnor is Lot 25 on the Wharf Creek Platte. And 1581 Marco is identified on the Green Hill Manor Section 8 Platte as a reserved parcel, but now has a house on it. These privately owned properties likely have no additional subdivision potential, but they are privately held. OPZ offers no objection to maintaining the original zoning in effect at the time that these lots and parcels were subdivided.
So any further conversation? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 22 to Bill 2724.
Ms. Radveen.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Feedler.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 22 to Bill 2724 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 25 to Bill 28-24.
Amendment Number 25. This amendment changes the zoning on the properties known as 8222 Ventnor Road and 1581 Marco Drive Pasadena from RLD residential low density to R1 residential.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Corresponding amendment to the previous amendment. Move the amendment.
Second.
Administration?
Same comments, Madam Chair.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 25 to Bill 2824.
Ms. Radveen.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Feedler.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 25 to Bill 2824 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 23 to Bill 27-24.
Amendment Number 23. This amendment changes the planned land use for various properties or portions of various properties in Pasadena located to the south of Pinehurst Road and Downs Memorial Park along the west and east sides of Mountain Road through to the beginning of the Gibson Island Causeway from rural to residential low density and from rural to parks and open space.
Mr. Volkey, this is your amendment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I just want to thank the Office of Planning and Zoning for working with me on this amendment, which was a significant amendment. This amendment rezones to existing zoning 500 and, actually, 497.3 acres at the end of Mountain Road. This is a significant amount of property. The recommendation from staff that had not been requested by the property owners was to downzone this area from low density residential to rural, which would have had an impact on all of these properties. And again, this was not something that was requested by the property owners. As a result, this is a reversion to the existing zoning. With that, I'd move the amendment.
Second.
Would the administration like to comment on Amendment Number 23?
Christina Pampa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. As Mr. Volkey said, this amendment for the Lake Shore Peninsula will revert the OPZ recommended zoning of RLD to the existing R1 and OS zoning for an approximately 497-acre area. Much of the area is located within the critical area RCA and LDA. Therefore, development is limited in these areas. Staff initially recommended RLD as a way to help limit development on the peninsula and protect the environment from additional septic systems. Five property owners applied to maintain their R1 zoning, and one additional application came in during this council process to maintain the existing zoning. OPZ offers no position on the amendment.
Is there any comments? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 23 to Bill Number 27.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry. I really wanted to chime in.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just because this is such a significant amendment, if there's any other comment that could be offered from the sponsor or from OPZ, I just would love to hear any additional thoughts that either of you might have on this. I'm looking at the critical area map for it, and I do see what you described, but it does look like there is a fair amount of land in between, you know, pieces of the critical area where there could be changes.
May I? Thank you. So I'll jump in, and I'm happy to hear more from OPZ. I think they ran an analysis, and at most, if this entire area was granted the maximum amount of development that could exist here, you would see 44 additional houses built in this 497-acre area outside of the critical area and with consideration for the limited development area, et cetera. I've talked to some of the property owners down here who were being rezoned, and their statement to me is basically, they don't want to see their properties downzoned to be a different zoning because the property is what it is, and so that is a direct change to their property that they did not ask for. So as a result, because it is their property and because they have asked in these particular instances to retain their existing zoning, that's what we're doing with this. So the request, or the recommendation, excuse me, from Office of Planning and Zoning was to take this down in density. And really, it does a little bit to impact any development, but it doesn't do a ton because, as Office of Planning and Zoning has indicated, there are already significant problems. I will tell you, there is one particular property in here that is in the subdivision prospect, process, excuse me, at the moment. And they've had a real challenge of a time, even getting approved by Office of Planning and Zoning because of septic concerns. So the reality down here is, there is very little in terms of development potential.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Feedler.
Thank you. I'm going to be supporting this amendment this evening, and you will see some amendments that I have coming. I have become incredibly sensitive to downzoning and R1 and R2 through discussions in my own district. I don't know what landowners are intending to do with their properties in the future, and I don't want to take any development potential away from anyone. So I will be supporting Mr. Volkey's amendment.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 23 to Bill Number 2724.
Ms. Radveen.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Feedler.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 23 to Bill 2724 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 26 to Bill 2824.
Amendment Number 26. This amendment changes the zoning on various properties or portions of properties in Pasadena located to the south of Pinehurst Road and Downs Memorial Park along the west and east sides of Mountain Road through to the beginning of the Gibson Island Causeway from RLD residential low density to R2 residential, R1 residential, or OS open space.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Corresponding zoning amendment to the land use amendment that just passed. Move the amendment.
Second.
Administration?
Madam Chair, we have the same comments as the previous amendment.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was just going to say, just for continuity, so folks aren't confusing the audience, there is a zoning map which we just voted on previously, and then there's the plan for that area. So we're in the process of voting one and adjusting the plan for that area that corresponds with the actual zoning change. So when you see, when you hear those terms corresponding, it's because it's the same issue. One is the actual land designation overlay. The other one is the plan that covers that area from either low density or whatever no man creature we're going to assign to it. So that's what we're doing, in case those were, in case there were individuals that were curious about. That's all. Thank you.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 26 to Bill 2824.
Ms. Radveen.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Feedler.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 26 to Bill 2824 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 24 to Bill 2724.
Amendment Number 24. This amendment changes the planned land use for a portion of the property known as 1514 Whitehall Road, Annapolis, from rural to residential low density.
Ms. Feedler, this is your amendment. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This amendment came out of a request from the landowner who did not request a zoning change. You'll see on the map that it is a very small parcel. I don't know that there is any development potential there, but the owner did not want this portion of their property changed, so I move the amendment forward.
The administration like to weigh in?
Christina Pampa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. So this is a 39-acre parcel that sits on the south side of Whitehall Road, and the amendment is to revert approximately 1.3 acres from RLD to R2 zoning, and we don't offer any objection.
Is there any further discussion from my colleagues on Amendment Number 24? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 24 to Bill 2724.
Ms. Radveen.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Feedler.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 24 to Bill 2724 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 27 to Bill 2824.
Please give me a moment. It appears that I am out of order.
Yeah, we are out of order. You are correct. Our stack is out of order.
Amendment Number 27 to Bill 2824. This amendment changes the zoning on a portion of the property known as 1514 Whitehall Road, Annapolis, from RLD residential low density to R1 residential.
Ms. Feedler.
This is, I believe, the companion amendment to the previously passed amendment. Motion to adopt.
Administration?
Christina Pampa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. I just want to make one comment. So this is a companion to the last amendment. In the italics at the bottom before the table, I think we have a mistake in here. It says residential low density to R1 residential. It really should be R2 to match the map and other portions of the amendment language.
Ms. Pampa, you were only referring to the actual description, but the amendment itself is correct?
Yeah, so does that not matter?
That actually does not matter. I can make that change. If the amendment itself, the language itself is correct.
The amendment itself is okay.
Then that is, then that is okay, and we will note that to change it to R2.
I found it confusing.
I don't have it. It is on your Google Drive if you have your laptops.
So, Madam Secretary, just for confirmation, we can go ahead and vote on this, and that error will be changed accordingly?
Yes, Madam Chair, because the amendment itself, the text language, is actually accurate. Just the description has an error.
Okay, thank you. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 27 to Bill 2824.
Ms. Radveen.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Feedler.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 27 to Bill 2824 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 25 to Bill 2724.
Amendment Number 25. This amendment changes the planned land use for various properties or portions of properties on Swaying Oak Court, Mason's Crossing Court, Truck House Road, Listman Court, and West Home Lane, Severna Park, from residential low density to residential low medium density.
Ms. Feedler, this is your amendment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As I mentioned during Mr. Volkey's amendment and in my previous amendment, this remains or retains the split zoning that is currently on each property. None of the property owners requested a change to their zoning, and this has the potential of removing opportunity for development on each individual property if they have the ability to do so in the future. Motion to adopt.
The administration like to weigh in on this amendment?
Christina Pampa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. So we already discussed this area when the council considered the amendment for 99 Truck House Road on June 3rd. I told you at the time that this is an area of a very large misalignment between parcel and zoning information. The Office of Planning and Zoning took this comprehensive zoning opportunity to correct that. We have had discussions with Ms. Feedler about her thoughts on this, and we respect that, but we're not giant fans of split zoning, especially when it's arbitrary, and therefore we aren't going to support this amendment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I understand where Office of Planning and Zoning is. My concern with any of these split zones being removed without owner request is that we could very well end up with a property owner, much like Mulberry Hill, who said, "I purchased my property with the intent of one day subdividing and giving to my family member." And if we pass, or if we keep the intent to make consistency on each property by removing the split zone and downzoning portions of these properties, we're taking that ability away. And I don't want to set the next council up for that scenario.
Any further discussion on Amendment 25 to Bill 2724? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment 25.
Ms. Radveen.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Feedler.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 25 to Bill 2724 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment 28 to Bill 2824.
This amendment will also be found in your Google folder. Amendment Number 28. This amendment changes the zoning on the property known as 304 Swaying Oak Court, Severna Park, from R2 to residential, to a split of R1 residential, R2 residential, and R5 residential, and changes the zoning on various properties on Swaying Oak Court, Mason's Crossing Court, Truck House Road, Listman Court, and West Home Lane, Severna Park, from R2 residential to either entirely R5 residential or a split of R2 residential and R5 residential.
Madam Chair, this is the companion amendment to the previously passed amendment. Motion to adopt.
Does anyone have any further comments?
Madam Chair, our comments are the same as the last amendment.
Ms. Radveen?
Thank you. This is just, I'll vote the same way as I did on the previous one, so they're consistent, but this is a question for Office of Law. Do we have any issues when, I don't remember this from property law, 25 years ago, when we make a, if we were to make a downzoning change? I mean, is that something that could possibly bring some sort of liability to the county? some sort of liability to the county?
Kelly County Supervising County Attorney, no, I don't think the county would have any liability for any zoning changes.
I'm sorry. We have a little confusion tonight. Madam Secretary, please call the role on Amendment 28 to Bill 2824.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 28 to Bill 2824 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 29 to Bill 2824.
Amendment Number 29, this amendment changes the zoning on the property known as 95 Dennis Road, and on a portion of various properties on Dennis Road and 310 and 312 Baltimore-Annapolis Boulevard, Severna Park, from R1 residential to R2 residential.
Ms. Fiedler, this is your amendment. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Same comments as the previous amendments. This amendment retains the split zoning on multiple properties. The owner did not request it. Motion to
The administration like to comment on Amendment 29?
Christina Pampa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. As Ms. Fiedler said, this is a very similar situation to the previous amendment. It does end up split zoning a number of properties. We're not big fans of that. We're opposing. Actually, let's say we're not supporting.
Any further comments from my colleagues regarding Amendment Number 29 to Bill 2824? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the role on Amendment Number 29.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 29 to Bill 2824 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 30 to Bill 2824.
Amendment Number 30, this amendment changes the zoning on a portion of the property known as 8324 Sycamore Road, Millersville, from R1 residential to R2 residential.
Ms. Fiedler, this is your amendment. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is another retention of split zoning. The owner did not request a change in their zoning on any portion of their property. Motion to adopt.
The administration like to weigh in on Amendment Number 30?
Christina Pampa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. So this property was originally platted in 1952 as a 22,000-square-foot lot, and the original rear line of this property was in line with its neighboring properties. At some point after that, two sections of property were added to the rear of the property, expanding the lot from approximately a half acre to almost one and a half acres. The front part of the lot, as Ms. Fiedler said, is currently R2, while the rear portion is zoned R1. Because of the size of the property, OPZ recommended it be rezoned to entirely R1. Ms. Fiedler's amendment proposes to change the zoning on the front part of the property back to R2. While OPZ is generally not a fan of split zoning because it can be arbitrary, in this case, it's not really arbitrary because it's going to follow the original line established in 1952. So the division between the R2 and R1 will be clear as the lots were platted as part of the platate of Elvaton Acres. Therefore, we don't offer an objection to this one. Shocker.
Okay. Is there any further comments or questions regarding Amendment Number 30? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the role on Amendment Number 30 to Bill 2824.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 30 to Bill 2824 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 26 to Bill 2724.
Amendment Number 26, this amendment adds language pertaining to guidance for future mixed-use zoning districts.
Ms. Fiedler, this is your amendment. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a follow-up to the mapping amendment that we did at our previous meeting. If you remember, we changed all of the commercial area in the center of Severna Park on Route 2 from mixed-use commercial to C3. This is the text language that I referenced in that meeting that was not yet prepared. Motion to adopt.
Would the administration like to weigh in on Amendment Number 26?
Sure. Christina Pampa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. So this amendment calls for a planning study to determine if a mixed-use zoning district may be appropriate in the future for the Severna Park Marketplace area. After the mixed-use zoning district code language is revised to implement recommendations made by the Region 2 and 7 SAC, OPZ supports.
Is there any discussion from my colleagues around Amendment Number 26?
Like 30 seconds to read the amendment?
Sure. You're welcome. Madam Secretary, please call the role on Amendment Number 26 to Bill Number 2724.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 26 to Bill 2724 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 27 to Bill 2724.
Amendment Number 27, this amendment changes the planned land use for the property known as 7831 and 7857 Southwest Road, Pasadena, from residential low density to maritime. Mr. Volkey, this is your amendment. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this is a property that you heard some testimony about this evening called Geisler Point Marina. I want to give kudos to both sides on this. I want to shout out to Ms. Geisler, who made a lot of concessions with respect to some covenants that were put on the property. I want to shout out the community, who obtained representation through an attorney, and then had that attorney work with the community to draft covenants that will secure for them many, if not all, but many of the concerns that they had relating to an MA2 zoning on this property. Ultimately, this is exactly what I think should happen when we are looking at land use, which is, there is a balance that has to be found, and ultimately, I appreciate that the property owner and the community were able to reach that balance, and they did through, they did that through covenants. So with that, this will rezone a property that has been used 70 years, something like that, 80 years?
1952.
1952, thank you, Ms. Pampa, that has been used as a marina, and will finally put it into the correct zoning and land use category, which is maritime land use and an MA2 zoning for the property. I also want to give special thanks to the Office of Planning and Zoning Region 4 staff, who did a Zoom meeting with myself and the community and the property owner back in the beginning of June, and I think answered a lot of questions, but also gave a lot of good information to the community, and the community was able, armed with that, to negotiate these covenants and try to get some things in place. So with that, that is the amendment that takes a property in Bayside Beach and rezones it to MA2, to maritime use. With that, I move the amendment.
Second.
Would the administration like to comment?
Yes. Christina Pampa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. So this property did not apply for rezoning during the Office of Planning and Zoning process. The property does have a nonconforming use decision that dates to 1977, and that, that nonconforming use cites that maritime use has existed at this location since at least 1952, if not longer. The nonconforming use decision also classified the use as an MA2-type use. There is an open zoning violation case for this property with complaints filed related to pile driving and marine construction uses on the property. This change of zoning to MA2 will align the marina use of the property to the zoning, but will not permit the marine contracting uses that may currently exist on the site. So it will address some issues for the site, but not all of the issues for the site. OPZ offers no objection to the amendment.
Is there any further comments or questions from my colleagues? Madam Secretary, please call the role on Amendment Number 27 to Bill 2724.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 27 to Bill 2724 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 31 to Bill 2824.
Amendment Number 31, this amendment changes the zoning on the property known as 7831 and 7857 Southwest Road, Pasadena, from R2 residential to MA2 light commercial marina.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Corresponding amendment to the prior land use change. Move the amendment.
Second.
Administration?
Same comments as before, Madam Chair.
No further questions? Madam Secretary, please call the role on Amendment Number 31 to Bill 2824.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 31 to Bill 2824 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 28 to Bill 2724.
Amendment Number 28, this amendment changes the planned land use for the properties known as 236, 238, 242, and 302 Ritchie Highway, Severna Park, from commercial to small business.
Ms. Fiedler, this is your amendment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This amendment takes three existing businesses from residential to small business, and retains the existing small business zoning for the larger portion in this area. The most northern lot that you see on the map, they were actually the impetus of a few for my small business legislation that we passed a few months ago, and I would ask my colleagues to support. Motion to adopt.
Does the administration like to comment on Amendment Number 28?
Christina Pampa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. I'm thinking about how I can shorten my comments. These four properties, they are in a line, but they don't necessarily have existing planned land use that matches, and so some of them came in during one part of the process or another part of the process. Ultimately, the Office of Planning and Zoning recommended C1 for the four properties. That was before Ms. Fiedler had worked on her amendment to expand some of the allowances in the small business zoning district, so we don't have any opposition if, if these go back to small business versus C1. And I know you heard some testimony from the community that they would prefer small business, I think, in this area than C1.
Any further questions, my colleagues? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the role on Amendment Number 28 to Bill Number 2724.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 28 to Bill 2724 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 32 to Bill 2824.
Amendment Number 32, this amendment changes the zoning on the properties known as 236, 238, 242, and 302 Ritchie Highway, Severna Park, from C1 local commercial to SB small business.
Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is the companion amendment to the previously passed amendment. Motion to adopt.
Christina Pampa with OPZ. Same comments as the previous amendment.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion of my colleagues? Madam Secretary, please call the role on Amendment Number 32 to Bill Number 2824.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 32 to Bill 2824 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 29 to Bill 2724.
Amendment Number 29, this amendment changes the planned land use for portions of the property known as No. Aberfoyle Road, Gibson Island, from residential low density to industrial, maritime to industrial, and from industrial to maritime.
Mr. Volkey, this is your amendment. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So as indicated, this changes certain parts of zoning on Gibson Island. I want to thank Councilwomen Radvian and Fiedler for taking a trip with me to Gibson Island to actually get to see this in person, and to see where some of these uses are currently butting up against the critical area, and quite candidly, have very little in the way of environmental protections for any runoff or other materials that are there that are going into the waterway. As we discussed with the folks at Gibson Island, this change and any potential redevelopment to these sites will allow them to put in stormwater management. It will allow them to have a lot more opportunities to mitigate any sort of environmental runoff on this property. So with that, this is a good change that will allow this area to put into place some protections for the environment that do not currently exist on the property, because this long predates stormwater management or any type of environmental consideration for the development. With that, move the amendment.
Second.
Would the administration like to comment on Amendment Number 29?
Christina Pampa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. So I just want to make a couple comments about Gibson Island. They, on this portion of their property, they were involved asking for planned land use changes during Plan 2040. They came in during the initial process with OPZ and asked for some, they did some tinkering with their zoning, and then they came in again to counsel and asked for more tinkering. I think that Gibson Island has been doing a significant amount of land planning to try and figure out where they want to be. It's obviously a privately-held community. One of the reasons they have industrial zoning is because they have a maintenance yard, because they, they do their maintenance in their community. So, you know, they have been involved. We're okay with whatever they've decided. They've decided for a little bit more maritime and MB zoning over on the west side of Aberfoyle. They've moved a little industrial to the east side of Aberfoyle. It's been a little bit of a shell game with them. Ultimately, this amendment does reduce their industrial zoning by, by maybe half an acre. And we support.
Any further discussion of my colleagues? Madam Secretary, please call the role on Amendment Number 29 to Bill 2724.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 29 to Bill 2724 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 33 to Bill 2824.
Amendment Number 33, this amendment changes the zoning on portions of the property known as No. Aberfoyle Road, Gibson Island, from W2 light industrial to MB general commercial marina, from MB general commercial marina to W2 light industrial, and from R1 residential to W2 light industrial.
Mr. Volkey, this is your amendment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Corresponding amendment to the prior amendment. Move the amendment.
Second.
Administration?
Same comments, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the role on Amendment Number 33 to Bill 2824.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 33 to Bill 2824 has been adopted.
Okay, we're finally out of the 20s. That was starting to stress me out. Okay. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 30 to Bill 2724.
Amendment Number 30, this amendment changes the planned land use for an unaddressed property consisting of 9.19 acres on the south side of Mountain and west side of Waterford Road, Pasadena, from low-density residential to commercial.
Mr. Volkey, this is your amendment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If you take a look at the exhibit, you can see where this property is located, and you can see that there is a significant amount of corresponding commercial property that is around it. This is at the intersection of Solly Road, Waterford Road, and Mountain Road, which is a relatively busy corridor in my area. I will tell you that this property has been purchased, as you heard, by the Jubs. If you don't put two and two together with them, they are school bus operators. That's what they do. So that, when they talk about expanding their business, what they are referring to is a place to be able to park school buses. So that is what they are hopefully looking to do here. I've I've had discussions with them about that opportunity and being able to do that, and as you've heard from some other folks, they have been longtime members of the community, and they've been very good members of the community. So with that, I believe this zoning makes sense, just given the change in the land in this area, and it makes sense in terms of the zoning. It also makes sense in terms of the folks who are going to be there, but we have to really look more to the land and the use of the land instead of just the people. And so in looking at that and the land, it makes sense. Move the amendment.
Second.
The Administration would like to weigh in on Amendment Number 30.
Christina Pampa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. So this property did not apply for rezoning during the OPZ process. It sounds like it maybe was newly acquired, and that's why. The rezoning of the nine-acre property to C1 expands the commercial zoning in an area that is majority R1 and R2, and I say that to the south and the east and the west. There is C commercial zone property in the area, but there is also a lot of residential. Also, because of the way this property is configured, it's going to end up stranding some small pieces of R1 within the commercial. OPZ's preference would be to maintain the R1 zoning until a future comprehensive process, when this property and the other residential properties could be evaluated for commercial zoning.
Are there any other comments, my colleagues? Questions? Amendment Number 30. Ms. Radvian.
I'm going to make my same request as before because this is one we didn't get a lot of time to consider, if there's any additional things that you could add to provide context or support your argument.
I'll just say, I've shared what I have. Yeah.
Madam Chair. I would like to add to Ms. Radvian's comment. So when you mentioned some future evaluation, can you define, like, what does that mean? Like an overlay or some sort of, you say comprehensive? Isn't this what this is?
It is, but I'm saying that this is going to strand a couple pieces of R1 with, completely within, commercial, and I would have liked to have seen the entire area dealt with comprehensively. And you're right. I mean, in order to push this off, we're saying the property would need to wait about eight years.
We have a school bus issue that can't wait eight years. Ms. Radvian.
Okay, so looking at the map here, I can see in particular on Waterford Road, I can't tell if this little piece that's, I think, one that you're referring to, Ms. Pampa, is residential, but I'm curious if you know anything about that parcel.
I can't speak to the one that's to the northern side that looks, if you look at Amendment 34 to Bill 2824, if you have that, instead of just seeing the colors of the zoning map, you can actually see some of the underlying dwellings or structures that are on the property. Do you see that? You'd have to go to Amendment 28, or 34 to Bill 2824. You have it, yeah. So, do you see it, Ms. Radvian?
Yeah, and I'm looking at the Google Street View just to get a feel for it.
Yeah, so the one to the north, I can't tell you whether that's occupied or not. I can tell you that to the south is, I believe, that's a gun club. It's either that one or the one that's one down, but there is a gun club there as well. I'm not sure if it's the property directly below it or if it's a little further down on Waterford.
Are you referring to the one on Waterford Road?
Yes. Further south.
Ms. Radvian. Madam, are we ready?
I guess as ready as we'll ever be tonight.
Okay. Madam Secretary, please call the role on Amendment Number 30 to Bill Number 27-24. Ms. Radvian.
Just acknowledging that this is a really tough call because we do have school bus issues, and I know that getting school buses up and down Mountain Road alone can be a challenge, so having a spot like this conveniently in the middle, but I also worry about the impact to these, especially this one residential, so I'm just going to prey upon the new property owners to be very good neighbors to the remaining residential and vote aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 30 to Bill 2724 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please call the role on Amendment Number 30, please read Amendment Number 34 to Bill 2824.
Amendment Number 34. This amendment changes the zoning for an unaddressed property consisting of 9.19 acres on the south side of Mountain Road and west side of Waterford Road Pasadena, from R1 residential to C1 local commercial.
Mr. Volkey.
Companion amendment to the prior amendment, move it.
Second.
Administration.
Same comments, Madam Chair.
Can I just ask, is it going to get an address after it gets rezoned? Going to get a number?
Planning and zoning?
Yeah.
They can get a number anytime they want. That happens through the planning division, so we'll be happy to take care of them.
Oh, good, okay. No further comments. Madam Secretary, please call the role on Amendment Number 34 to Bill 2824.
Ms. Radvian.
I'm just going to note that I know the fire department really appreciates addresses, too. Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 34 to Bill 2824 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 31 to Bill 2724.
Amendment Number 31. This amendment changes the planned land use for a portion of the property known as 4438 Purple Martins Road Pasadena, from rural to residential low density.
Mr. Volkey, this is your amendment. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So as indicated, this does change a very small portion of a property to make it low density residential from rural, which gives it some subdivision potential. I had conversations with the owner. The owner of this property, if you're taking a look at Exhibit EE1, also owns the parcel that is across Purple Martins, which is the large green area. His initial request was that the entirety of that be rezoned and made entirely low density residential because he wanted to subdivide it for family purposes, to be able to put some of his family there, similar to some of the arguments that we've heard from others this evening. In looking at it, I could not support his desire to rezone the entire piece of that property. It was simply too much, but I did speak with him about this parcel, which is a portion across the street that abuts existing low density residential. And in that discussion, it was agreed that this portion of the property would be the only part that was rezoned to low density residential. And in the companion amendment to this, we will bring the zoning to match what is a budding property. So that is the reason for this. It is a very narrow amendment. It is intended to be narrow. This is not a mistake. We are not doing this because we were confused. This is a very intentional decision with respect to how the council is zoning this, and it is very intentional that a portion of this property only be rezoned. So I'm putting that on the record in case the administrative hearing officer ever gets this case down the road on a change or mistake request from the property owner. I want the legislative record to be clear what we did and why we did it. With that, I'd move the amendment.
Second.
Would the Administration like to weigh in on Amendment Number 31?
Christina Pampa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. So this property owner requested a land use change during the Plan 2040 process for low density residential planned land use. This was not supported by the Office of Planning and Zoning, and ultimately, the adopted Plan 2040 planned land use for the site was rural. The property owner requested a zoning change through the PAB during the Region 4 Comprehensive zoning process, and the PAB and OPZ were not supportive of the request and recommended the property retain the adopted RLD zoning. As Mr. Volkey said, the entire property is over 15 acres and is split by the Purple Martins right-of-way. This amendment is to change approximately 1.3 acres on the west side of Purple Martins Road to R2 zoning. There is a distinct line between the R2 and RLD zoning in this area that also coincides with the no-plan sewer service category. The zoning change will breach that line and potentially opening other properties to rezoning in the future. We're not in favor of this amendment.
Any further discussion? Ms. Radvian.
Thank you. Do you know what the landowner's purpose was in requesting this change?
Yes, as I said, it was for family conveyance, so he indicates to me that he would like to subdivide the property and then have family members live there on the property. So that's the reason that I was willing to work with him, to put it to you very bluntly, is that that was what was indicated.
Thank you for repeating that if I missed it before.
Seeing no other lights, Madam Secretary, please call the role on Amendment Number 31 to Bill 2724.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 31 to Bill 2724 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 35 to Bill 2824.
Amendment Number 35. This amendment changes the zoning on a portion of the property known as 4438 Purple Martins Road Pasadena, from RLD residential low density to R2 residential.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you. Again, as indicated, this is a companion to the prior amendment, and the R2 zoning matches, if you look at the exhibit, the abutting property behind it, which is already developed. So with respect to the match in terms of the area, that is the match. With that, all the same comments from the previous amendment. Move the amendment.
Second.
Administration.
Madam Chair, we have the same comments.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Amendment Number 35? Madam Secretary, please call the role on Amendment Number 35 to Bill 2824.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 35 to Bill 2824 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 32 to Bill 2724.
Amendment Number 32. This amendment changes the planned land use for the property known as 850A Ritchie Highway Severna Park, from residential low medium density to small business.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This property is not rectangular in shape. It has a very narrow access off of Route 2. The property adjacent to it on the north is already zoned and has an operating small business. The applicant requested anything from small business to C2. When I was looking at the map, I noticed the far rear of the property was in close proximity to existing residential properties, and felt with the closeness of the small business that it's already in operation, small business was most appropriate. And you heard from the property owner earlier tonight, Ms. White, motion to adopt.
Radvian, second. Would the Administration like to comment on Amendment Number 32?
Sure. Christina Pampa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. So this property did not apply for rezoning during the OPZ process. OPZ offers no objection to the small business zoning.
Any further discussion?
I've got one comment, not in reference to this.
Sure.
Do you know how we can, because for future region reviews, so that, you know, I noticed that we get a lot of the properties, especially the business ones, don't communicate with you all, and then it gets to us. Is there anything we can do to enhance that so that during the region team review that we try to, we maximize, is there something we're not doing, I guess, that's preventing them from communicating with you first during that process? Or what do you think is the cause of them not coming to you, and then all of a sudden they come to us?
Christina Pampa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. I think that they didn't know. I don't know that anyone intentionally waited, but it comes down to outreach and having time to do outreach. I think that with each successive round of region plans, you will see more outreach. I can tell you that the applications for the SAC members for Regions 5, 6, and 8 closed last night. We have 191 applications. I mean, that far exceeds what we had for 2, 4, and 7. So the word is getting out, and I'm hoping, I know I'm a little nervous, that's the next thing I have to do, but I think that we've made some changes to how we're doing outreach, and I was even talking to Dr. Bonner about, you know, we need to do outreach in our African-American searches so that we can, you know, get people to understand the process earlier. So we don't have a Mulberry Hill on our hands. If we had had conversations with Mulberry Hill earlier, we probably would have recommended the whole area be different, so.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Secretary, please call the role on Amendment Number 32.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 32 to Bill 2724 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 36 to Bill 2824.
Amendment Number 36. This amendment changes the zoning on the property known as 850A Ritchie Highway Severna Park, from R5 residential to SB small business.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is the companion amendment to the previously passed amendment. Motion to adopt.
Administration.
Same comments, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the role on Amendment Number 36 to Bill 2824.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 36 to Bill 2824 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 33 to Bill 2724.
Amendment Number 33. This amendment changes the planned land use for the property known as 850B Ritchie Highway Severna Park, from residential low medium density to commercial.
Ms. Fiedler, this is your amendment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This property is immediately to the south of the previous property we just passed amendments for. Both of these properties are the only two remaining residential properties in this section of Route 2. The request or the amendment to move to C2 is in line with the commercial zoning to the south of this application, and so I will move the amendment forward.
Would the administration like to comment on Amendment Number 33?
Christina Pampa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. So this property also did not apply for rezoning during the OPZ process, but OPZ does not offer any objection to the C2.
Any comments? Oh, Mr. Smith?
Ms. Fiedler, so that's the reason you did the small business on the previous one? Is that buffer to the more densely populated community?
Correct.
Is that logic? Okay. All right. Thank you.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 33 to Bill Number 2724.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 33 to Bill 2724 has been adopted.
We're all feeling it.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 37 to Bill 28-24.
Amendment Number 37, this amendment changes the zoning on the property known as 850B Ritchie Highway Severna Park from R5 residential to C2 commercial office.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is the companion amendment to the previously passed amendment. Motion to adopt.
The administration, your comments stand?
Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry. I will wake up.
That's okay. I have a routine going, so I don't want to leave you out. Any further comments? Seeing none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 37 to Bill 2824.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 37 to Bill 2824 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 34 to Bill 2724.
Amendment Number 34, this amendment changes the planned land use for a portion of the property known as 1481 Baltimore Annapolis Boulevard, also known as 20 Old Frederick Road Arnold, from residential low density to small business.
Ms. Fiedler, this is your amendment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We heard earlier from Ms. Knype regarding this request. There is a four-square home that is, or residential structure, that is included in this small business triangle. I had worked with Ms. Knype years ago to try to write a text amendment to the zoning code to allow for small signs on residential properties in certain conditions. That did not go very far because, obviously, it applies countywide. By rezoning this small front section to small business, it would allow for this location to have natural healing business offered to residents of the community and have that small sign on the property, and fits all of the requirements of the small business zone. And with that, motion to adopt.
Would the administration like to comment?
Sure. Christina Pampa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. So this property also did not apply for rezoning during the OPZ process, and as Ms. Fiedler said, the nonprofit wants to expand the use in the house. They don't want to expand the house. They just want to have different use there, and we don't offer any objection to the amendment.
Any further comments? Seeing none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 34 to Bill Number 2724.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 34 to Bill 2724 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 38 to Bill Number 2824.
Amendment Number 38, this amendment changes the zoning on a portion of the property known as 1481 Baltimore Annapolis Boulevard, also known as 20 Old Frederick Road Arnold, from R1 residential to SB small business.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is the companion amendment to the previously passed amendment. Motion to adopt.
Same comments, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Seeing no further comments, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 38 to Bill Number 2824.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 38 to Bill 2824 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 35 to Bill Number 2724.
Amendment Number 35, this amendment changes the planned land use for the property known as 161 Ferguson Road, Annapolis, from rural to commercial.
Ms. Hummer, Mr. Volkey, this is your amendment.
Yes, this is the property on Ferguson Road. As we heard from the owners of this property, they are currently surrounded, even the RLD, that is, rural areas that are around them are being used as a gun club and state highway land, so there isn't other residential areas along this stretch. It is a parcel of 10.7 acres. Over 60% of it is in, already in a perpetual forest easement, so there aren't, isn't going to be a clear cutting of trees, which I know is a concern of some people to have that. With the current house and yard there, there's only about approximately two acres of other developable land that could come about. I want to stress to people who are concerned about more residential coming that the change of zoning does not give a red light for any kind of zoning, any kind of development that comes through. Any green light, I'm sorry, doesn't give a green light to any other development that comes through. Anything that would possibly be proposed for this in the future would still have to go through all of the processes for the county, including bulk regulations, forest conservation, stormwater management, engineering restraints, infrastructure things. So it is not going to be an immediate unchecked development that will come. But it is, the way that this area around here has developed, the traffic and how it is, it, the RLD makes it a very difficult parcel for the owners to use at this time, and based on what is going on around there, I believe that C2 is a better use of this property at this time. Yes, I move it.
Would the administration like to comment on Amendment Number 35?
Sure. The property owner applied for commercial planned land use during the Plan 2040 process, but the decision was deferred to the region plan process. The owner applied for C4 zoning during the initial OPZ application period, and the SAC and OPZ recommended the existing RLT zoning be maintained, while the PAB recommended C4. This amendment is for C2. We still are opposing this amendment to C2 and would prefer to see this property maintained as RLD.
Any comments from my colleagues? Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This has been a very difficult one because I know that there are aspects of this property that have obviously spoken to my colleagues. We had a lot of testimony at the last meeting. I personally met with a large number of folks in a Zoom meeting that are in the area of the community, or I'm sorry, in the area of this application, and went through a 17-point PowerPoint presentation on the surrounding land, its uses, and I was not able to persuade any of those community members. I know this council has talked on previous legislation on where firearms should be allowed to fire in proximity to residential property lines. I know that there are members or constituents in Mr. Volkey's district who signed the petition to change this, so I think I understand maybe where he's coming from. But I cannot support this amendment. I sat as the representative for the area and tried to get my constituents there, and they couldn't get there, and therefore I cannot get there either. And I just ask my colleagues to support my opposition as the council member for this area.
Any further discussion on Amendment Number 35 to Bill 2724? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 35 to Bill 2724.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Nay.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Nay.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Five in the affirmative, two in the negative. Amendment Number 35 to Bill 2724 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 39 to Bill 2824.
Amendment Number 39, this amendment changes the zoning of the property known as 161 Ferguson Road, Annapolis, from RLD residential low density to C2 commercial office.
Ms. Hummer?
Yes, this is, this is the companion bill to the previous, previous bill. I move to adopt.
Second.
Administration? Same comments?
Same comments, Madam Chair.
Any further discussion of my colleagues on Amendment Number 39? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 39 to Bill 2824.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith. Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Nay.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Five in the affirmative, two in the negative. Amendment Number 39 to Bill 2824 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 36 to Bill Number 2724.
Amendment Number 36, this amendment changes the planned land use for a portion of the property known as No Number Veterans Highway Millersville from conservation to commercial.
Ms. Fiedler, this is your amendment. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This parcel has been a topic of conversation in the past. A lot of communication has transpired between the intended purchaser, the existing property owner, and the community. There have been acknowledgements that there is a restrictive land covenant on this entire property. However, the intended purchaser is already in design to develop the larger commercial property to the north. They are stuck with their design because the landscape manual requires a 25-foot buffer for any activity adjacent to conservation area. The purchaser is, has agreed not to touch any of this, of this parcel, even though the amendment is to split-zone it. It is only so that they can continue with their design and get around the landscape manual restriction. So with that, motion to adopt.
Would the administration like to weigh in on this amendment?
Madam Chair, may I just add one final comment? There was communication between the community that has the restrictive land covenant immediately prior to coming into chambers this evening. The head of that community association is in support of this amendment, but couldn't get out here this evening.
Christina Pampa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. So this half-acre property sits on the northeast corner of the intersection of Veterans Highway and Benfield Boulevard. During Plan 2040, the property owner requested a land use change to commercial. The Office of Planning and Zoning had recommended mixed use for the property, and ultimately, conservation planned land use was adopted. The property owner requested a zoning change to C2 on the entire property during the initial OPZ application period. The Office of Planning and Zoning was supportive of the application for the larger parcel to the north, parcel 308, as C2, but was not supportive of the application for parcel 546, which this is, because the county council had amended the property to conservation. The SAC and PAB had agreed with OPZ's recommendation. The amendment now is to split-zone the properties, C2 and open space, and as you know, we're not giant fans of split zoning, and this is a very tiny parcel. It's only a little bit over a half an acre. We would obviously prefer that it either remain OS or C2 in its entirety.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know this may not mean a lot to my colleagues right here who haven't studied this area extensively, but the conservation section that is staying in conservation is the closest to the Bear Branch Restoration Project, which obviously has more sensitivity to it. And again, the parties involved have put in writing multiple times, and I'm saying it here, if this were ever to be challenged, that there is no intention, and there is an agreement to not touch the entire parcel. It will remain untouched.
Seeing no other comments, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 36 to Bill 2724.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 36 to Bill 2724 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please call, please read Amendment Number 40 to Bill 2824.
Amendment Number 40, this amendment changes the zoning of the property known as No Number Veterans Highway Millersville from OS open space to a split of OS open space and C2 commercial office.
Madam, Ms. Fiedler, this is your amendment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is the companion amendment to the previously passed amendment. Motion to adopt.
Same comments, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Seeing no discussion, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 40 to Bill 2824.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 40 to Bill 2824 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 41 to Bill 2824.
Amendment Number 41, this amendment changes the zoning of the property known as 8270 Waterford Road, Pasadena, from C4 highway commercial to C3 general commercial.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this amendment, initially, if you all recall, at two meetings ago, I was going to change this back to the original zoning, which was R1. But I heard the testimony from Mr. Rollin, who was the property owner. He was here again this evening. I had an opportunity, based on that, to go out and meet with him at the property. I invited some of the neighbors to join me on that meeting. They elected not to attend. In going to the property, I had an opportunity to see exactly where he lives and what he lives next to. There are some interesting things that I think need to be noted about this. When he purchased this property, the property directly north of him, if you're looking at the map, is currently zoned C4. That was not zoned C4 when he bought this property. That property was actually zoned residential at the time. That, through an administrative hearing, was rezoned and made C4. And then the use on that property changed from any sort of residential use into effectively a contractor yard, where there are storage of vehicles, there are storage of contractor materials. And so if you're in his yard, his swing set is directly next to the fence that is the contractor yard. In his backyard, you look at his property, you can see that the entirety doesn't go all the way over to 915, which is BNA Boulevard. That is a recovery residence behind him. The properties that are C4, that are directly next to him to the north, approximately northwest, north and northwest, those are storage lots currently, as are the lots beyond him. To the south of him, there's a property that is zoned R1, but that's currently being used by a landscape business that is operating out of that. So when I went to the property and looked at it, I am cognizant of the concerns of the community further up the street and across the street, who view this area as constantly changing, because it is. And this area really ties into the next amendments that we're going to discuss, which are Ember Drive. In this area, it has changed drastically. The residential nature of this area has shifted. However, my intention with this amendment, and my intention that I'm putting on the record, is I see this as the natural end to that area, right? Mr. Rollin's property is here. There is a use next to him in a residentially zoned area that is currently not a permitted use in that area. Behind him, it is a permitted use of the recovery residence, and I would suggest that if the neighbor to the south comes in on that R1 property and seeks some sort of administrative rezoning by way of change of the community or of a mistake, to be clear, it's not a mistake, because I went there, I saw it, it exists today. An incident to the comprehensive rezoning plan, we're electing not to rezon that property as well. So that is an intentional decision by the council, and it cannot be seen as a mistake. I would view this as a portion of land that can serve as a natural buffer to stop the spread of the commercial properties down further onto Waterford Road and the intersection there with BNA Boulevard. So I put all that on the record expressly, again, to lay out a foundation in the event that any property owner comes in trying to seek a mistake or a change in the character of the community through the administrative hearing officer, and make it very clear what the council understood and what I understood at the time I did it. So with that, I did speak with Mr. Rollin. I did ask him to amend his request from C4 down to C3. The reason for that is, some of the uses that he could do on the property, he can still do in C3. I recognize that his neighbors are already C4, but he and I did have a discussion on what the possible uses were, and he was agreeable to that, understanding that the alternative was I would not be able to support C4. So with that, I want to thank him for compromising. I want to thank the Office of Planning and Zoning for working to get the signs out, and that is the basis for the amendment, so I would move the amendment.
Second.
Would the administration like to comment on Amendment Number 41?
Sure. Briefly, Christina Pampa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. So we had recommended C4 for the site, and the SAC and the Planning Advisory Board had agreed with our recommendation. Obviously, this is a lower level of commercial, going from C4 to C3, so we don't offer any objection to the amendment.
Any discussion of my colleagues about Amendment Number 41? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 41 to Bill 2824.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 41 to Bill 2824 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 37 to Bill 2724.
Amendment Number 37, this amendment changes the planned land use on portions of the property known as 201 Amber Drive, Pasadena, from residential low density to industrial or residential low density to parks and open space.
Mr. Volkey, this is your amendment. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I apologize in advance for the length of my remarks, but we did hear a lot of testimony about this property, so I want to put some things on the record, make sure they're clear. First, I want to make it very clear to the community that I stand with you in opposition to rezoning the entirety of this property W2. So as you know, that was what the property owner requested, was the entirety be W2. That was initially what was presented at the June 11 meeting. That was what we talked about at that meeting. I have, as you can see, clearly amended that position and stepped back. And the reason is because of your outreach, and so I want to thank you all for that, because but for your outreach and but for your comments and feedback that you've provided, this property in my mind would continue to be something that makes sense to be W2 in its entirety. It doesn't. And that's why I asked the property owner to amend their request, put up a different sign, and then I worked with the Office of Planning and Zoning to draw the line. I want to make a couple other additional points. So So, there were a lot of comments about statements that I've made in campaigns, and I appreciate that, because it's always important, as an elected official, to be reminded of the things that you've said. And I will tell you, I view what I'm doing here as consistent with my remarks. You all may disagree, but I view it as consistent. I'll tell you why. One of the main things that I heard in 2018, when I was running for office, and many of my colleagues heard this too, no more residential development. We're overbuilding Anarundel County. We have too many new houses going in, too many new kids going to our school, too many new people on our roads. That was what I heard. That was what the county executive heard too, because one of the biggest complaints of county executive Shu, who was the prior county executive, was that he had allowed too much residential development. So when the community stands here and says, "We'd rather see this be residential," I would say to you, "That's not what I heard when I ran for office in 2018. That's not what most of my colleagues heard either." So as a result, that was a big concern, and that's one of the reasons why keeping this residential, to me, does not make sense, because I have been adamantly opposed to residential rezoning in District 3. And you can look at this plan, and you can see, there is very little residential rezoning, because that was what I heard. That was what I heard through the whole campaign. It's interesting to me that 211 and 217 Ember Drive have never been addressed by the community once. Those two properties, if you note in the consistency table that was provided to this bill, 217 and 211 Ember Drive, which are CZ, R4, PAS, 2208, those properties are 12.3 acres. The staff recommended that they be rezoned from R1 to open space. That was Office of Planning and Zoning, who recommended that the entirety of those 12.3 acres on the properties directly abutting Chesapeake landscape materials be rezoned from R1 and open space to W2. And the rationale was that this change to W2 is consistent with the adopted plan use and is compatible with the surrounding area. W2 is consistent with the owner's intention to expand natural wood recycling operations. Now, the community has never once objected to those properties, and if you look on the map, those are the properties that actually are directly behind your houses. So if you look at where your houses are and where your street runs, if you look just north of that, those are properties 211 and 217 Ember. The property that we're discussing, as you know, is further. It's further over to the west, and it's 201 Ember Drive. That property, there have been a number of concerns about environmental issues that could arise if there are changes to the property. As you all know, Route 10 is to the immediate west of that property. Route 100 is to the immediate north. And the only buffer between Route 100 and the property is land owned by State Highway. Now, I've heard that at some point, State Highway may put some additional access ramps coming from Route 10 to get onto Route 100 eastbound there. That's not in the works, but that is something, apparently. That's why State Highway hasn't sold that piece of property. But as it's owned by State Highway, at this time, it's going to continue to be wooded, because obviously it's not being rezoned, and it'll continue to be R1 property. But as you've heard about Ferguson Road, the state can come in and do whatever they want on the property. They're not restricted by the zoning that we put on. So if another governmental entity owns it, they can do what they want. So ultimately, what they choose to do with that property is not something we can control. There were initially concerns, and the change.org petition that was started by the community that got the approximately 128 signatures, the last time that I looked, what was pitched there was that 80% of the trees were going to be removed from this 25 acre parcel. So a couple things to remember. This is actually a 22 acre parcel. As I shared with you over the weekend, Office of Planning and Zoning had a chance to reassess the size of the property. It's a little bit smaller than we thought. And, based on the way that we're going to zone this property, and then the forest conservation, as I laid out to the community, property owner, all my colleagues on the council, and the planning and zoning staff, the most that is going to be able to be cleared, in terms of trees, is going to be 9.96 acres. That's 44% of the property. Once you factor in that there is going to be open space, residential zoning, and then forest conservation, that has to be protected on the W2 portion of the property, you ultimately see 9.96 acres is the maximum amount of that property that could be used for this. And, the maximum amount is subject to whatever it is that planning and zoning through the development review determines is acceptable. Additionally, as I've laid out to the community multiple times, there is a special exception process. So in the event that this property owner decides they want to go and expand into this 9.96 acres over here, or even into the 211 and 217 property that we haven't heard anything about, that will require, for each of those expansions, a special exception decision. The administrative hearing officer in the Planning and Zoning Department, who is appointed by the county executive and who ultimately reports to the county executive, will have to make that decision, looking at the special exception criteria. That's going to be the case for each one of these properties. And if you all, as the community, say, "That's crazy. We don't think that special exception should be granted," you have the opportunity to fight that through the special exception process. If you disagree with the outcome of special exception, you have the ability to appeal that to the Board of Appeals. If you further disagree with what the Board of Appeals does, you have, at times, a right to go to the circuit court and to again appeal it. So with respect to the foregoing conclusion nature of the expansion, it's not. And with respect to the footprint that can be used, it's significantly smaller than what we previously discussed in that initial meeting. One of the concerns that the community presented, and I actually spoke with one of the community members, and I pulled out a picture of the map at the end of the meeting, and I said, "Show me where you would want the line to be," right? If you had your way, how would you draw the line? The idea that I heard from that community member was, keep the line as high as possible and away from the community as much as possible. So the way that we're currently doing this zoning, you can see, it runs the line off the existing property. But where the forest conservation easement actually lands doesn't have to be parallel to the line. It could be a different iteration. It could preserve that sort of triangular area and make that the forest conservation area, which again builds in further buffer. The buffer that will exist between this property and any industrial use is going to be over 12 acres. That's what I laid out to you in this email that I sent to you. And I know that this is not the solution that the community wants to see. I get it. I understand that. The preference would be no change whatsoever. But when you think about that area, and I recognize that the folks in Selby Grove have said, "This isn't good for our community. We don't like that." I've tried to do everything I can to look at what we can do to protect your particular community from the negative impacts of this. But when you actually step back and look at the broader community, that was where I gave you additional points as to how this does positively impact the community, the county, and the state. Now, I know that that does not do a whole lot for you, but it again is interesting to me that the 211 and 217 parcels, we've heard no objection to those being rezoned. Those are recommended by planning and zoning staff. Those were properties that are even closer to your houses, and those are properties where, if expansion happens by way of special exception, you're going to have noise even closer to you than if it goes into the 201 property. So that's the part where I'm not fully following the concerns, because I think there could have been an argument from the community that 211 and 217, that staff recommended to rezone, were incorrect and inappropriate, and those 12 acres shouldn't have been rezoned either. But the SAC, the PAB, Office of Planning and Zoning, every one of them did recommend those be rezoned. I also want to point out about the forest conservation. So four of us up here did vote for the toughest forest conservation laws in the state in 2019. So myself, Ms. Pickard, Ms. Fiedler, and Ms. Rovian, were all on the council at the time, and we passed that unanimously. And those were the strictest forest conservation limits at the time in the entire state of Maryland. So we did that already. And those will be the rules that are going to have to be followed for forest conservation with any expansion into any of these properties. And all of that will be reviewed by the Office of Planning and Zoning. And again, this is, this is a split zone, right? So, the top portion of the property, which is the farthest portion away from the community, is the part of the property that will be rezoned to an industrial use. The portions closer to the community are going to retain either the R1 character, which is what the community's asked for, or open space, which is effectively undevelopable, right? That's land that can't be used. And the most important thing with the way we're doing the split zone is, the landowner can't use that as part of their forest conservation. They can't do their forest conservation in the R1 or in the open space. They have to do it on the W2 portion. So that was key to me in having discussions with Office of Planning and Zoning to further push a buffer for you all that would add another 30% of the W2 portion into a non-developable area. So, with all of that in mind, and understanding the concerns of the community and the balance that we have to run up here, I have tried, as much as I can, to find a midpoint here, because I think that compromise is ultimately the best way to achieve the balance that I told you all I would work to get when I ran for office. So with that, I hope that my colleagues will support me on this. I think this is a reasonable compromise. I recognize that Office of Planning and Zoning is, I think, going to oppose this, but I do want to say, thank you for your work with me to try to draw these new maps, and your work to find a balance with me, even if you don't necessarily... You all right? Okay. Even if you don't necessarily support it, for you to work with me to try to find a compromise that I could get through, and I could get to that point. So I appreciate that from the Office of Planning and Zoning, and I again thank the community for your advocacy, because but for what you all have done, this whole property, we would just be looking at W2. So by you all coming out and advocating, we've created this over 12, almost 13 acre buffer between your community and whatever these industrial uses would be. And I think that's a testament to you all, so I want to thank you again for that. Move the amendment.
Second.
Would you like to weigh in on Amendment Number 37?
Certainly. Christina Pompa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. So this is a 25 acre property at the end of Ember Drive, south of a property that's owned by the State Highway Administration. It is one of a number of properties owned by New Cats Edition LLC. So first, I want to address the four properties that are in a line that Mr. Volkey referenced that OPZ has already recommended for W2. So during Plan 2040, an amendment was adopted to change the planned land use for four properties owned by New Cats Edition to the east of this property to industrial for either low-density residential or natural features. Because of that land use change, the properties were proposed for W2 zoning by OPZ, and the SAC and PAB agreed with that recommendation. Now, I haven't stated this on the record, but I'm going to state it right now. So there were a lot of planned land use changes that were made during Plan 2040, and I know that there are certain council members that are on the dais right now that did not vote to adopt the bill. But the bill did get adopted, and so planned land use changed. OPZ disagreed with a number of the things that happened over the course of that bill, which was adopted on May 3, 2021. But, we honored the planned land use changes that were made during Plan 2040, and we didn't attempt to unwind any of them during this process, which is why we automatically went forward with a W2 recommendation for those four properties. So, OPZ ended up recommending R1 for this property because of the property's position at the headwaters of the Magathie, and because the properties are fully forested. And when I say the properties, I mean the 201 Ember Drive and the SHA property. The properties are within the county's green infrastructure network and are mapped as forest interior dwelling bird species habitat. Future residential development would be less of an impact to the environmental features on the site than industrial. The SAC affirmed the R1 recommendation from OPZ. The SAC had routinely been conservative with their recommendations, especially when environmental features were present, so their recommendation wasn't really a surprise to us. And OPZ, at this point, continues to oppose a rezoning of this property, especially now that the zoning is a three-way split of W2, R1, and OS. Basically, the northern portion of approximately 14 acres would be converted to W2, and then the lower portion of the property is reverting the zoning back to currently what exists, which is a combination of R1 and open space.
Is there any... Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Pompa, can you just confirm for me? You mentioned it was 25 acres, but in your email on the 27th of June, you told me it was 22.45. Is it 25 or 22.45?
So, Christina Pompa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. ESTAT, the State Department of Assessment and Taxation, says the property's 25 acres. RGIS information, when we ran the acreages, we came up with 22.45.
Okay.
However, if you really want to know what the acreage of this property is, you need a boundary survey by a licensed surveyor, and OPZ is none of those.
Totally understood. I just wanted to confirm, we had had that discussion about the size. Madam Chair, may I ask another question?
Of course.
Thank you. Ms. Pompa, for 211 and 217 Ember Drive, the properties that are being recommended to go to W2 based on planned land use, those are also fully forested, aren't they?
They are.
Thank you.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to make sure that I'm understanding the map in the amendment correctly. Is this section here, and then this section here, R1?
So just above, just above the W2 is the parcel that's owned by State Highway. So you see, that's a lighter color. You don't have a color map, but it's a tan color.
Yep.
And then there's a purplish portion, which is the 14.23 acres of W2.
Mm-hmm.
And then directly below that is another tan portion, which is retaining R1 zoning. That's its existing zoning. Then below that is a light green color, and that is what's retaining an open space zoning.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Smith, for showing the image over Mr. Volkey's shoulder. Yes.
Is there any further questions or comments regarding Amendment Number 37 to Bill 2724? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 37 to Bill 2724. Ms. Rovian.
Nay.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one in the negative. Amendment Number 37 to Bill 2724 has been adopted. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 42 to Bill 2824. Amendment Number 42. This amendment changes the zoning on the property known as 201 Ember Drive Pasadena to a split of R1 residential, W2 light industrial, and OS open space. Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Companion amendment to the prior amendment. Move the amendment.
Second.
Ms. Pompa.
Same comments, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 42 to Bill 2824. Ms. Rovian.
Nay.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one in the negative. Amendment Number 42 to Bill 2824 has been adopted. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 43 to Bill 2824. Amendment Number 43. This amendment changes the zoning of the properties known as 2134, 2226, 2222, 2150, 2224, 2152, 2160, 2146, 2126, 2124, 2176, unaddressed parcel, and 2130 Mulberry Hill Road, Annapolis, from R1 residential to R2 residential. Ms. Fiedler and Ms. Rovian, this is your amendment. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think I'll go first, and then Ms. Rovian will follow. I think this is the only amendment that we've seen that there are two... Well, it's not, but (laugh) it didn't start as a councilwoman for the area amendment, and I just want to explain why. When the very first amendment came, or amendment request came to me, I looked at the map and saw that there was a clear division, and that was the roadway of Mulberry Hill Road. To the south and to the east is R2 residential zoning, and where the application came from was on a side that was all R1 zoning. Understanding through conversations and from the chart that we have for amendments to Understanding through conversations and from the chart that we have for amendments to these bills, I had concerns that the application and the change could be considered spot zoning. In my meeting with Office of Planning and Zoning, I asked if this could be considered spot zoning. The answer was yes at that time. However, Office of Law was not in that meeting. So I made my decision based off of that conversation. But what I said to the applicant is that I think that there is an argument to have the entire northern side of Mulberry Hill rezoned, because it is the only little peninsula that jets out that is so oddly separated that a portion is very clearly different from everything else. But we were not at a point in the region for rezoning that I had the authority to change that entire area. At that point, we were in the process where you had to have an application from the property owner in order to move an amendment forward. So when I went back to Office of Planning -- I'm sorry, Office of Law, after Ms. Radvian took that first application and got clarification on the definition of spot zoning, it was shared that this would not be considered spot zoning, because R1 and R2 are both land uses that are defined as low-density residential. So I sat with that for a while and talked to the original application that came in the honor of the property for that application. I considered the opposition that I was hearing from the community on environmental factors and potentially adding more septics to the system, and I think those will be caught during the development process. If a property is not large enough to subdivide, that will happen during that process. If the property faces a situation where they don't have enough square footage on their property for a septic field, that will be identified through the development process. The applicants were only asking for the opportunity to have the same ability to develop as their neighbors across the street, and I felt like it was a very compelling argument, and I decided to take on the amendment myself. I want to thank the community. Dr. Raul, I don't know where you are. I can't see -- there you are. Single-handedly worked to get this information out to as many community members as possible. Ms. White, who we did the commercial and small business zoning for in some amendments previously, I believe she only found out about this because she's also a resident on Mulberry Hill or has property over there. So I agree, we have to do better on reaching out to our African-American communities and all of our communities, really, because there are people here tonight that felt like they didn't have the information. So I'm doing all that I can to improve communication from the District 5 office. I know that doesn't help right now, because we're wrapping up Region 4, but please, I've said this in previous meetings, sign up for my newsletter. I share information twice a month on legislation that's coming before the council. It will do you a great service to know what's happening on all topics coming from the county council. And with that, I yield to my colleague, but I do want to make a motion to move the amendment forward.
And I'll second that and just add that I'm grateful to Dr. Raul for coming forward and raising, you know, raising this idea and raising this concern. And I'll just say that I didn't necessarily see, when I ran for office, that zoning could be a path to racial justice. That was not on my bingo card, but you learn new things all the time, and I'm glad that we've been able to do something that should have been done a long time ago when the opposite side of Mulberry Hill Road was zoned R2. And now all of the residents of that area will have the same opportunities to pass on their land, subdivide, and sell a piece of land if it can go through the process. So I'm grateful to Ms. Fiedler for joining me and ultimately taking the lead here. So we've moved and seconded.
Would the administration like to comment on amendment number 43?
Christina Pampa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. So a group of 13 property owners has applied for R2 zoning where R1 currently exists on the north side of Mulberry Hill Road. There are 42 properties in this neighborhood area. Unfortunately, we didn't receive any applications for rezoning during the OPZ process. We did participate with Ms. Radvian and Ms. Fiedler in the meeting that they held in early June to talk to residents in this area. The area is in a future sewer service category. The lack of public sewer and other code requirements may impact future subdivision potential in this area, but as Ms. Fiedler said, that would be handled through the development process. However, the Providence neighborhood to the south and the waterfront areas west of Mulberry Hill -- I'm sorry, east of Mulberry Hill Road are all zoned R2. The residents in this neighborhood seek zoning equity with the surrounding areas to the east and south. OPZ supports the request. I do want to say one thing. So the thing that limited -- this is a comprehensive process where we look at properties in groups, and we try and do zoning that is in areas, not specifically to one property. The signage requirements, which came out of a charter amendment and then ultimately through code language, they require that if there's going to be a zoning proposed for a property that's different from what OPZ recommends when the bill is submitted to council, that a property has to have a sign. I really think now, and you've asked me in the past for my comments on this, but now I really have some, I think that there should be a change to the signage requirement to allow for neighborhood signage. McCarran Court in Region 2 could have been one sign up at the front. This is -- I drove back Mulberry Hill a couple weeks ago. It's a very clear, you know, entrance into the community. One sign could have done it. Food for thought for later, but we wholeheartedly support this amendment.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you. I just want to add, after going through a confusing period on spot zoning and exactly what it is, I have asked for Office of Law and Planning and Zoning to do kind of a debrief before we jump into the next set of regions to really talk us through it and give us an opportunity, maybe at a work session, to ask questions so that we can have a very clear picture moving forward.
Good idea. Mr. Smith.
Just for continuity's sake, when it comes to future -- to piggyback off what Ms. Radvian said, is there a tenant or a pillar we can add in the plans when you do your review? And I don't know if it could apply to these next unstarted reviews. Obviously, the ones that have already started are in our underway. It's a little different, where the racial equity is actually a consideration for how land is reviewed. Is that something that could be done for future ones, or is that, you know, we queued that up for the next 10 years from now, when that next council will review comprehensively?
I mean, I feel like racial equity is one of our pillars. It's mentioned in Plan 2040. The problem is, we have to have the outreach. We have to find those communities and talk to them early in the process. That's really, I think, what we need to do. And then, yes, we can do a better job.
But doesn't the county have a map of historic neighborhoods or minority neighborhoods that are -- do we have something like that already on the -- and do you ask?
I don't think we do.
We don't? Okay. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Well, I just -- I'm very, very pleased to see this amendment. I'm very happy, and it'll certainly be getting my support. But I do also want to mention that for the Region 3 and, I gather, Region 1 planning, we are in -- I know the Office of Planning and Zoning is in active conversations with communities in my district, so I'm very pleased on the early end, the front end of that planning. So I do think we're learning as we go along, and we're in -- for the next three years, at this time of year, we're going to be dealing with region planning. So the ones at the end, those last three, they had to wait the longest, but they'll probably be done more efficiently and effectively, as we've all learned from this process. And then by the time we do it again in 10 years, we will have changed the way we do it. So we're all just working as hard as we can here. If there's no further comments on amendment number 43, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number 43 to Bill 2824.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment number 43 to Bill 2824 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read amendment number 44 to Bill 2824.
Amendment number 44. This amendment changes the zoning of the property known as 2116 Bayfront Terrace, Annapolis, from MA2 light commercial marina to MA3 yacht club.
Ms. Fiedler, this is your amendment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have to first give a shout out to the Pedicry Point community. You have come to every meeting and testified. You are here at almost 10:30 at night, waiting for the last amendment. It is the last amendment, because we gave it and you gave it, your all, and it just didn't happen. I know you got a little nervous over the weekend, more than a little nervous, but you worked through the weekend, and I thank you for that. And at the end of the day, I represent the community of Pedicry Point, sitting here on the council, and I respect that you did all you could but couldn't get there. And so this amendment is to retain the MA3 that you have requested, move to adopt.
Would the administration like to comment on amendment number 44 to Bill 2824?
Sure. Christina Pampa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. So the adopted zoning for the site is MA3, which we've heard from many members of the public. The owner applied for MB zoning during the initial draft review period with OPZ, and OPZ was not supportive of allowing heavier maritime uses in a residential neighborhood, and the SAC agreed. The property owner then requested MA2 zoning during the PAB review. In submitting this application, it was discovered that some of the current uses at the site are not consistent with the adopted MA3 zoning district and are more consistent with MA2. OPZ and the PAB were supportive of the request for the MA2, but obviously, we've heard a lot of testimony from the neighbors about the marina and its uses, and OPZ offers no objection to reverting the zoning to the existing MA3.
Is there any further discussion from my colleagues on amendment number 44? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number 44 to Bill 2824.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment number 44 to Bill 2824 has been adopted.
Thank you. Both Bill number 27-24 as amended and Bill 2824 as amended will be heard for a final vote on July 15, 2024. Madam Secretary, I have a request from colleagues to take a five-minute break, which will probably turn into a 10-minute break, but we need to get back. We have further things to legislate, so we'll be back. We have further things to legislate, so we'll be back.
Bill Number 3024, An Ordinance Concerning Zoning, Planned Unit Developments, Community, and Employment.
Mr. Smith, this is your bill, and as a reminder, we have closed the public hearing at our last meeting on this.
All right, so I'll be very quick. This is the PUD unit that is potentially impacting the, I think it's late because I forgot the road name, for Belver Road Project up in District 1. Again, it is a rubble landfill that has been there for years, and this was an attempt to remediate some of that area up there and also to allow some other activities to occur. It was done in conjunction with coordination with the community, as well as the county and the developers. And so, at the appropriate time, I will ask for a consideration for this to be postponed, and I'll explain at that time why these two weeks will be necessary to do that. Thank you.
The administration like to comment?
No, I think we're good, Madam Chair. Hearing closed, I'll just remind everyone, this does also make some other changes to the PUD ordinance as well.
So, what I would do is make a motion to hold this for another two weeks, and the reasoning being, for the last couple of years, we have worked diligently with the county, with stakeholders in the communities, to come up with a vision of what we wanted to occur in that area. It is prudent on our part, at least certainly my part, to make sure that what we've told the community is what will transpire in the future. And so, I think this two weeks, this additional two weeks will be used to allow the non-government entities that we've been working with to work out, potentially work out some of their issues that they're going through, because the worst thing I would want us to occur is we spent all this time telling the community one thing, and then this entity winds up doing something else. And so, I do not want that to happen because we spent all this time working with the community. And so, if this two weeks will allow them to remediate or work through some of their issues, then I'm open to giving them that space to be able to do that. So, a motion, I hope, for two weeks.
Second.
Okay.
I second the motion.
Thank you.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you. I'll support you, Mr. Smith. I don't have any problem doing that. I guess my question is, you know, this bill expires.
I do.
The next meeting, so you're not going to have a chance to amend this.
Correct. I'm fine with the bill the way it is. There's no question about whether or not I need to amend the bill. For me, I think the question is whether or not all of the stakeholders involved are going to be committed to the journey and the path that we've set out for the community. And if that is not going to be the case due to internal issues with other parties, then I don't want, you know, the community to be sort of put at risk because of that. So, that's the reason.
Madam Secretary, there's a motion to hold, and it's been seconded, and please call the roll on the motion to hold.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. The motion to hold Bill 3024 to July 15 has passed.
And due to the late hour, I'm sorry, my casualness, this is a motion to hold the vote, so just to be transparent and clear to the public. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 59-24.
Bill Number 5924, An Ordinance Concerning Purchasing Contracts Availability of Funds.
Mr. Hunt, this is administration bill. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table, I have Hannah Dyer, Deputy Chief Administrative Officer, Catrice Parsons from Purchasing, Billy Penley from the Office of Finance, and Kelly Kenny from the Office of Law. And I'll turn it over to Ms. Dyer if she would like to make any points, or I can just run through this real quick.
Either spot.
Okay, okay, so I'll go ahead. So, at the start of the term, one of the county executive's goals for the second term has been to improve government processes. So, this bill and the next bill that you'll hear propose legislative recommendations that came out of the Purchasing Process Work Group, which was convened in 2023, to make recommendations to make the purchasing process more simplified and efficient. This bill proposes to increase the level of purchase that requires the Controller to certify funding availability to match the proposed small procurement threshold of $10,000. You'll remember, there was a resolution for a charter amendment earlier this year, which was 1524, to give the voters the chance to vote at the next election on whether to increase the small procurement threshold from $5,000 to $10,000. The threshold for certification of funds is currently misaligned with both the current $5,000 and proposed $10,000 threshold for small procurements creating confusion. The primary goal of this change is to align purchasing requirements and reduce confusion, but it may also reduce the administrative burden on the Office of Finance as well. It will affect less than 2% of the total dollar value of purchases. The current level of $2,500 for certification of funds has been in place since 2005, which is almost 20 years ago. We're happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you. Quick question. I think this is a good bill. I guess my question to you is, are we preemptive on taking this to 10,000 if the voters haven't approved what we're trying to do? Or am I misunderstanding that? And I may be.
Currently, the threshold for certification of funds is misaligned with the current small procurement threshold.
Twenty-five to five?
So, the certification of funds threshold is 2,500 right now. The small procurement threshold is 5,000.
Right. So, I get that misalignment. But if we're taking this to 10, and we've approved as a council to take it to 10, but the voters haven't affirmed that yet, are we getting there a little too early to do this? Is this the right timing? That's kind of my question.
They don't necessarily have to be aligned, as is demonstrated by the fact that they aren't aligned right now. So, we, I mean, I guess we are kind of looking forward and anticipating that the voters will approve that $10,000 threshold that you all kind of passed the resolution for unanimously. But yeah, the idea is that at the end of the day, after the November election, everything will be aligned.
Look, I'm going to support you. I'm not, I'm not, I'm just asking the question logistically, are we sort of putting the cart before the horse? Should we wait till after November or not? It sounds like you're saying it doesn't matter, so that's okay.
Yeah.
Are there any further questions of my colleagues regarding Bill 59-24? Seeing none, we need to have a public hearing. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
We had no one signed up ahead of time. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on Bill 59-24? Seeing no movements, or sudden movements, or any movements, we will now close the public hearing on Bill 59-24. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 59-24.
Bill 5924, An Ordinance Concerning Purchasing Contracts Availability of Funds.
Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 59-24.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 5924 has passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 60-24.
Bill Number 6024, An Ordinance Concerning Purchasing Sole Source Procurements, Single Source Procurements, One Bid or Offer.
Mr. Hunt, this is an administration bill. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table, I still have Hannah Dyer, Catrice Parsons, and Kelly Kenny. So, Bill 60-24 does two things. First, it creates a process for competitively bid contracts that only result in a single bid to improve process flow and transparency for these single bid procurements rather than shoehorning them into the sole source process. And it also exempts specific types of purchases that cannot be solicited efficiently from the procurement process. These are outlined in the bill, but they are utilities, software license renewals of previously purchased software, training and professional certifications, accreditations or licenses for employees, purchases for public events and programs related to venues, and purchases from intergovernmental and quasi-governmental agencies. Happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions of my colleagues regarding Bill 60-24? Seeing none, we'll now open the public hearing on Bill Number 60-24. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
We did not have anyone sign up ahead of time. Is there anyone here in the audience who wishes to give testimony on Bill Number 60-24? Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill Number 60-24 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 60-24.
Bill Number 6024, An Ordinance Concerning Purchasing Sole Source Procurements, Single Source Procurements, One Bid or Offer.
Is there any discussion? Ms. Strubelke.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, I'm looking at the exemptions from the article. They're on Page 2 in 81-102, and obviously, it's late, so I'll try not to belabor this point. But I am curious about these exemptions and what we're saying are not going to have to go out to bid specifically. I can understand the previously procured software licenses, because I guess you would have already put those out to bid, so you're simply renewing an existing contract. But the training of county employees, that seems like something where, I don't know, maybe you have a specialized vendor, and so that's why you have to do that. But like rentals of venues or something, that seems like that could create some issues if somebody wanted to go to like a particular vineyard or winery that they might have ties to, and they're like thinking this would be good, but we don't have to put that out there. So, I'm just thinking about those kind of things. That's my immediate thought. How do we avoid this becoming a way to reward or help people that we like?
So, I think that's a really good question, and Catrice is prepared to kind of run through the different categories that we're proposing exempting from the sole source requirements.
That's a good question, and it's something we would address in the purchasing regulations to ensure, and those would still come through the purchasing department for approval before they would, you know, it's just not going to be open up to anything. It would have to meet certain requirements and obviously not be something that we could openly source.
So, you're still watching? Good.
Are there any further questions or comments regarding Bill 60-24? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 60-24.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 6024 has passed.
Okay, we got to resolutions before midnight. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 24, 25-24.
Resolution Number 2524, Resolution Authorizing the Filing of an Application with the Maryland Transit Administration of the Maryland Department of Transportation for Section 5303, 5304, 5307, 5309, 5310, 5311, 5316, and/or 5317 Grants Under the Federal Transit Act for Federal Fiscal Year 2024.
Mr. Hunt, this is administration resolution. You and your team have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt from the administration. With me at the table, I have Crystal McGill-Belk from the Office of Transportation, and Greg Swain, our county attorney. So, this is simply an authorizing resolution authorizing Maryland Department of Transportation to file grant applications through the Federal Transit Act to the federal government, because federal money that is awarded locally flows through the state. The state needs our authorization to apply for these grants, is my understanding. If Ms. McGill-Belk has anything else to add.
Can I do that right?
Yep, you're good.
Hi, Crystal McGill-Belk from Office of Transportation. We have to submit an application to the Maryland Transit Authority with the state, and this is a requirement that we, with our application, that opinion of council gets approved by our council as we submit application for grants.
Any questions? Ms. Hummer.
Thank you for staying so late for this. I hate that y'all had to be here, and it's not up till 11 o'clock.
Any further comments? We'll now open the public hearing on Resolution Number 25-24. Madam Secretary, did we have any public testimony about this?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
No one signed up ahead of time to speak. Seeing that there is really only two people in the audience, I don't think anybody's coming up to speak on Resolution 25-24. We'll now close the public hearing on Resolution 25-24. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 25-24.
Resolution number...
I'm sorry, I said somebody's feeling like chopped liver out there.
Resolution number 2524, Resolution Authorizing the Filing of an Application with the Maryland Transit Administration of the Maryland Department of Transportation for Section 5303, 5304, 5307, 5309, 5310, 5311, 5316, and/or 5317 Grants Under the Federal Transit Act for Federal Fiscal Year 2024.
Is there any further discussion of my colleagues? Ms. Rodbien. It truly is for FY '24?
FY '25.
Okay, then it's just a typo. Is that typo in an important place that we need to note?
It's on the agenda, so I don't know.
Oh. Okay. May I propose an amendment to correct the typo? Is that a technical? Mr. Swain?
I think, Greg Swain, county attorney, I think under the administrative officer's authority, under the rules, that type of a typo can be corrected prior to the bill being enrolled.
So, no amendment required?
No.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution 25-24.
Ms. Rodbien.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution number 2524 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 26-24.
Sorry about that. Resolution Number 2624, Resolution Reappointing a Member to the Anarundel County Ethics Commission.
Mr. Hunt, this is your resolution. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This resolution appoints Daniel J. Semick to the Ethics Commission. He's currently on the commission. This is a reappointment, and this resolution is a follow-up to Council Resolution 1824, whereby the county council nominated him, and this is appointing him.
Any discussion of my colleagues of Resolution 26-24? Seeing none, we'll now open the public hearing on Resolution 2624. Madam Secretary, did we have anyone signed up ahead of time to speak, or any testimony given on the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
We'll now open the public hearing. I mean, I already did that.
Yes, ma'am.
There is no one here to speak on this, unless anyone here. You're welcome to come forward. With seeing no movement in the audience, I'm going to close the public hearing on Resolution 2624. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 26-24.
Resolution Number 2624, Resolution Reappointing a Member to the Anarundel County Ethics Commission.
Seeing no further discussion, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution 26-24.
Ms. Rodbien.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution 2624 has passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 27-24.
Resolution Number 2724, Resolution Proposing an Amendment to the Charter of Anarundel County to Clarify the Duties of the County Auditor.
Ms. Hummer, this is your amendment. You have the floor.
Yes, so currently, the county charter does outline the duties of the county auditor. This is just clarifying some of the aspects of that. It's ongoing work within the legislative branch to update and expand for clarity to the public about what the duties are. This will clarify that the auditor has access to all the records and files of any entity in the county government in order to conduct an auditor investigation, that they will, they shall investigate all allegations of fraud, waste, or abuse, and all of these should be reported to the auditor. And it also provides whistleblower protections to anyone who assists or provides information to the auditor's office during the course of an investigation. So, that's all I have.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Volkey.
Madam Secretary, can I please be added as a co-sponsor on this resolution?
Noted, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Fiedler.
Madam Secretary, can you please add me as a co-sponsor as well?
Yes, Ms. Fiedler, thank you.
Ms. Rodbien. I'll join as well. Ms. Ledbetter.
I'd like to join as well.
I have a question.
Well, before I let him, you can go ahead and add me as a co-sponsor as well. Mr. Smith.
So, when I read the, is theft, and I don't know if it's for the sponsor or for the county attorney, I noticed that theft or fraud was being removed and replaced with fraud, waste, or abuse. Is theft considered abuse? Is that captured with the new terminology?
Greg Swain, county attorney, I would think so. Now, we have a fraud, waste, and abuse hotline currently, and I think that's where that language came from.
Check.
But I think a fair reading of those three terms would include theft, financial misdeeds, things of that nature, for certain.
All right, well, I guess I'll make it seven then, so you can just add me as a co-sponsor.
Noted. To all, we will change the sponsor line to read by the entire council.
Would the administration like to weigh in on this resolution at this time?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. Obviously, we always support increased transparency. Whistleblower protections on here, I think, are pretty standard in other counties, so that's, that's a good thing. I know, putting policy issues aside, I think Mr. Swain had a legal point he wanted to raise, just for clarity.
Sure. Greg Swain, county attorney. It's really the scope of the expansion that gives the Office of Law pause. The, one of the critical components of this is in the first section B, it allows the auditor access to all documents, including those that are confidential by law. And what we're talking about there really are two privileges that are common law privileges that are applicable in this situation. One is the attorney-client privilege, which protects communications between an attorney and client, and the other is the executive or deliberative privilege. Now, the attorney-client privilege in this case, the way the Office of Law has always handled is dual representation of the county council and the county executive, is to maintain basically a firewall between them and not disclose anything that's revealed to the attorneys by the council, to the administration, and vice versa. So, in effect, in that situation, we view that as having two clients, and that preserves confidentiality for each client. That also encourages free discussion of issues, legal issues, with each client. So, wiping that protection away would remove that protection, and obviously hinder those free exchange of ideas. Attorney-client privilege is something that's universally recognized. It's recognized under the Maryland Public Information Act, and always been a very important privilege for clients to rely on. The second privilege is the executive or deliberative privileges, which protects pre-decisional communications regarding, with the executive branch. So, that privilege is, it does not protect the final decision, but it protects everything leading up to it. And that, again, is a commonly recognized privilege. It's also recognized under the Maryland Public Information Act. What this, what the charter amendment also raises is a question in my mind about the privacy of state law over local law. Maryland Public Information Act, obviously, is a state law. This is a local law, so there is some question whether that is going to trump the local law. And there are a couple cases out there involving Montgomery County that kind of give a mixed view of those provisions. So, we have some legal concerns about the enforceability of this, and also potential for this to raise some disputes between the branches that would only have to be resolved by litigation, which has never happened in county government. So, we do have some, we have concerns about that. There are legal concerns about the enforceability, and also the importance of these two protections, really, for free government. So, that's the Office of Law's concerns.
Who was first?
I think they were all on.
Mr. Smith, we'll just go down the list here.
So, I, I actually, I understand that I'm, I don't know if the lead sponsor is even open to mitigating that attorney-client privilege piece within this. Where in here, did you say that line was again? You said?
It's in the very first section, section B. It's like line.
Says that are confidential by law.
14, 15, 16.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and, I mean, I'm open to amending that, to keep those protections for the attorney, me personally, so I'll just put that on the record.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, with respect to my colleague, I'm not open to amending it, but here's why. I certainly don't think that anyone on this council voting for this intends to invade the attorney-client privilege. And I've had some discussions individually, obviously nothing violating the Open Meetings Act, but we've talked about it, some of us on the council, about what this means, and no one intends to invade the attorney-client privilege. We all understand that that is inviolate, and that must be held as a Sancho Sact privilege that exists between the county executive and anyone in the Office of Law that's providing attorney-client privileged information. None of us are trying to invade that. What we are trying to say is that deliberative documents and those things that possibly led up to decisions, that those probably should be something that the auditor should have access to and ability to see. This does not mean that those records are disclosed publicly, and I'm saying this not to you, Mr. Swain, but just generally for the record. But that does not mean that these records automatically go out into public view, or that they are going to be shared by the auditor's office far and wide, but there are many things that are already shared between the administration, the auditor, and the council that remain private, including things like personnel records or pay information. Those are items that we get, and we are not allowed to disclose, because we are under the same duty as the council, but to be able to understand the decision-making process and how the county executive reached certain decisions, some of those documents that have historically been protected from disclosure because of this assertion of executive privilege because of the deliberative nature, those documents are important, and those are things that if we don't have those for the auditor, we don't have any ability to fully understand what the county executive knew, was thinking, and why certain decisions were made. So, I do not have any intent to amend this language and change it, because I think that I would hope that future councils would review this and understand the legislative history for why this was passed. No one up here is seeking attorney-client privileged information, but there are other pieces of information that are currently withheld by the executive branch that we think the auditor should have access to. So, I hope I've correctly stated the position of my colleagues, and if I haven't, I know all of them will jump in and say that's not my position, but that's how I come at this, is I don't think we need to change this, because, as you correctly pointed out, if there was ever a challenge to this, if the Office of Law was to assert that we were seeking through the auditor some kind of attorney-client privileged document, you'd win that. There's no question to me. Like in court, you would win that hands down. Deliberative documents may be more questionable, but attorney-client privilege, that's too settled. So, that's my take on it, and that's my position for why I would vote for it, and why I don't think there's any need to change the language.
I can respond. Certainly, I understand you saying this council is not going to do that. Now, we've seen examples in other jurisdictions of councils that would when things get acrimonious. So, with the charter amendment, we are looking ahead to the future, not only what this council's going to do, but what future councils are going to do. The other issue, if it was pushed and attorney-client documents were released or were sought to be released, it puts the attorney in a very difficult position, because attorneys are bound by the Maryland Rules of Professional Conduct for lawyers, and this is obviously a violation of that. So, it could lead to discipline from the attorney if it was in an acrimonious situation. So, the attorney-client piece is a very important piece, in my view. I do think the deliberative privilege is equally as important. It does certainly give the executive branch that idea that you get the decision, but we should be able to freely talk about it. And anyone who's ever been the subject of an NPIA request, requesting documents, internal documents, knows that can be uncomfortable. So, it's, those privileges are there for a reason. As I said, they're recognized by state law. We feel they're important. We feel that there is a question as to the enforceability of this, but I get your comments, and I understand where you're coming from.
Ask one quick follow-up.
Of course.
Does the council have any sort of deliberative privilege?
Council's a public body, so your deliberations take place in public.
Correct.
You have a legislative privilege, which is different.
Well, and to the, to the extent that less than three of us are having a discussion, that's not protected. There's no deliberative privilege there.
Typically, it applies to the executive branch.
Right, understood.
Yes.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to concur with my colleague. In my time on the council, I have treated confidential records or confidential communications very different than attorney-client privilege. So, I just, I do support Mr. Volkey's statements.
Ms. Rodbien. Thank you. I apologize. I was reading through some of this language again, and so I think I may be attempting to reiterate something that's already been said, but since it describes it as confidential and not privileged, that's where you were starting. My apologies. Ms. Hummer.
I have a question for Madam Auditor. So, this language that we're referring to that says, including those that are confidential by law, it's my understanding that this language is in the state guidelines for the state auditors. Is that correct?
Michelle Buller, county auditor. That is correct.
So, this is coming from the state guidelines for the state auditors. And then I have a, want an additional question. So, if this is the auditor who's going to be doing the investigation, and they're requesting these documents, these documents aren't necessarily going to come to the council. They're going to come to the auditor for her investigations. And, Madam Auditor, again, a question for you. What are your guidelines when it comes to confidentiality for the documents you would receive?
Yes, so this is a common topic that we've seen in various jurisdictions and at the state. It's been very clearly distinguished, a difference between audit access and any type of public information request. We have a lot of various obligations for confidentiality. First, hopefully this goes without saying, but we are required to follow all federal, state, and county laws. A lot of access to sensitive information is handled in those manners, and there are provisions for audit access. We are a Yellow Book audit shop, which means that we follow the generally accepted government auditing standards, and this includes certain ethics requirements, including the proper use of government information, resources, and positions. And just to read that sentence, government information, resources, and positions are to be used for official purposes and not inappropriately for the auditor's personal gain, or in a manner contrary to law or detrimental to the legitimate interests of the audited entity or the audit organization. This concept includes a proper handling of sensitive or classified information or resources. Continue a little bit longer. This is a huge topic for our profession, and so one of the areas that our office undergoes a peer review to make sure that we're appropriately following all of the Yellow Book standards. My position requires a CPA, which I possess, also has ethics requirements. In addition to that, I'm a certified fraud examiner, a certified information systems auditor, and those both have requirements. One more, there are additional guidelines for the professional organizations that we belong to, and I say all of that because ethics and the integrity of our office are so critical to our role and our ability to do our job successfully. And the distinction between a public information act request and confidential information is a really important distinction. is a really important distinction, and our access to information comes from that provision within the charter. So it's not a discrepancy between state law and county law. It's specific to our role, which is not a public access question.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion regarding Resolution 27-24 at this time? Does the administration have any? No lights on.
Madam Chair, if I may. So just very briefly, when it comes to confidential by law, what my frame of reference always is, is the first bill I was here before you on, which I'm sure you all remember well, was the legislation setting up our Police Accountability Board. The records of the Police Accountability Board, or of the Administrative Charging Committee, are confidential by state law, and anyone that shares those records is subject to immediate removal from the charging committee, which would hamper police discipline. And so I just, I raise that as an example where there are provisions of state law that say these records are confidential by law. There are other records maintained by the county that are confidential by state law or by federal law, and people who, individuals who share those records intentionally or otherwise could be subject to discipline. So that's not to say, you know, I certainly don't mean that as a, you know, hammer, but just be aware that those conflicts between state, in state and federal law regarding confidentiality do exist, and it just could potentially create some challenges for people navigating those legal requirements.
Mr. Smith.
So, and this, maybe it's for the auditor. Would we ever, using that as an example, if you have a police who had misconduct on his job, not considered fraud, maybe, I guess, I guess what, I guess my concern would be, are we, would there ever be an instance where we would want to receive any of those confidential documents that is not related to a fraud, waste, or abuse instance? And when I hear the word abuse, my context from an audit standpoint is, I think, financial, mainly because I'm on the budget side of the house for, on the federal government side, and we do audits on a regular basis. And when we audit U.S. Cyber Command's books, NSA's books, from a financial standpoint, it's making sure the intent of the dollars is being used and leveraged in the instance by which the legislators had intended it to be used. We don't investigate if someone criminally did something and request those documents because it's like two separate lines. And I guess in my mind, are we opening up the door where we're also gaining access to even those sites, those types of documents into this pool of documents that we now have access to that have none to do with fraud, waste, or abuse from a financial standpoint? And that's, I guess, I don't know who can answer that or?
Madam Auditor has her light on.
Okay.
I would say that the bill makes a number of changes to the auditor's office, not just the ones we've talked about, and expands her authority to investigate things that is not limited to fraud, waste, and abuse. Performance audits are allowed under the Charter section, things of that nature. You know, and I will say, and I said this earlier, that if that type of a document, for instance, ACC records, were requested by the auditor, we'd have, you know, the Office of Law would have to weigh in on that. There is a case, I mentioned a couple cases in Montgomery County. There's a case called Shropshire where Montgomery County has an inspector general, which has general review authority. In that case, the police records that were under the old Libra records, personnel records, were requested, and ultimately, the Court of Appeals said, "You don't get them," even though you have that broad language. It wasn't quite this language, it was a little different because it didn't expressly say you get even documents protected by law. The Montgomery County Code provision did not say that, but ultimately, when the inspector general requested them, the court upheld a denial of access under those circumstances. So, you know, you get into that situation where there could be conflicts of that nature.
Madam Auditor.
Thank you. Michelle Buller, County Auditor. I think that it's important to distinguish the legitimate requests that we would make as a part of an audit, a special review, or work that's requested on behalf of the council as additional duties. Those are the three areas that we have our authority to do any of this work. So I could ask for anything. It doesn't mean that it's legitimate. So it's important that the work that we do follows standards, which are those that I was discussing, but I do take issue with the presentation of this as an expansion of roles. Fraud, waste, and abuse has been in the charter for a number of years. I think as far back as I had seen, it's not a recent change, the ability to investigate that. And there were extensive discussions, I know, since I've been in the county about what performance auditing entails and what that looks like, but the discussions about that type of work go back to that study done in 1963 to discuss what this office looked like and the accountability and oversight that that entails. We see in the profession a lot more performance auditing in terms of what is called and how we look at that, but the idea is to make sure that the resources are being used efficiently and effectively. So to say that it would involve disrupting criminal investigations or I'm going to take over those types of roles is really, it's not best practices, it's not the profession that I have or the work that we do. It doesn't mean that there wouldn't be certain scenarios where we would make a request of something that can't be anticipated at this point, but if those discussions happen and they're utilizing county resources, then that is something that would impact what we look at and could lead to further discussions about if we have the right to that. But I would assume at that point, we would have information indicating why we were asking for that. It's not that we just come up with a list of questions and send those out. It's well-defined projects with scope. There might be a reason or a catalyst for that happening, and then, you know, steps and procedures that are developed, planning that's performed to make sure it meets the professional standards that I discussed and also achieves the goal of the project.
Thank you. Mr. Volkey.
Thank you. So just to be clear, the auditor's office falls under the legislative branch. There's a reason for that.
Agreed.
Agreed, thank you. And so as a result, the legislative branch is always considered, in this county, the final fiscal authority. So as a result, the idea that waste, fraud, and abuse is limited to financial issues, when you think about what we do, literally everything we do in this county is a financial issue because every personnel action, every person that's employed for the county, every use of that person, that is a financial decision. Even if the county exec or somebody on their staff, or even in our own, if we were investigating our own house, right, even if someone is not misspending money, if you had someone doing a task using county resources, because time is a resource, and that was an inappropriate use of that resource, you're misusing county resources. So that is an abuse of a county resource. So this is a much larger view, and this is trying to codify that larger view as opposed to what's been the interpretation, I think, from Office of Law historically, which has been, it's got to be related to some sort of a spending review, that there is a narrower scope. So I think what this council is trying to do is grow up, and we've talked about that a lot, about this council growing up. And the idea that this council is going to be an effective check on the executive branch, and the way to do it is to put in the county charter some empowering language that allows the county council's auditor, which is what Madam Auditor is, to be able to have this investigatory review and this authority to now step outside of merely looking at, you know, well, was this program spending money the right way or not? Because we, as a body, are being held responsible for all the fiscal decisions in the county because we're the final fiscal authority. So let's be clear about what that allows us to do, and it allows us to make sure that all the dollars being spent, all the resources being used in this county are being used in an appropriate way. That's what this does, that's what this codifies, and that's what my intention with this is, and I believe that's ultimately the body's intention, is to allow the council to really serve as the effective check against the executive branch that this council has talked about becoming.
Ms. Rodvian.
I think it's the.
Oh, I know what I was, I'm sorry, I was going to say, oh my gosh, I keep thinking about our president. My brain does this. Isn't it somewhat, wouldn't it be somewhat understood that when we are talking about, you know, when we have a position where we might have conflicting law surrounding confidentiality, that, I mean, there's already a hierarchy in place. I mean, a county law can't undermine something that's required by state law. Isn't that sort of implicit in anything we put in the charter?
Generally speaking, yes, but privileges can be waived, and they can be waived. So the question is, does the council have the authority to waive a privilege that the executive branch could otherwise assert? So that's the ultimate question that the courts wrangle with. And the other thing I'll just add is, again, I understand the comment, and I don't doubt it one bit, that the council or the auditor would not request documents or information protected by the attorney-client privilege, but this law says they can. So even though the intent is, if we won't do it, law says you can do it.
But then couldn't the, you know, whoever was the request addressed to, couldn't they turn around and say, "I'm not going to provide that because it's protected by attorney-client privilege"?
Well, that's exactly it. That's the conflict.
But that's not a conflict. The attorney-client privilege is, I mean, that goes beyond what's?
If there is an acrimonious relationship between the council and the county executive, and that privilege is asserted, how does that get resolved? Either the auditor backs off or a different auditor on a different day might say, "We're taking you to court." My point is, if the intent is that it's not going to cover that type of privilege, then it should say so.
We might have to agree to disagree tonight. Do we have any other comments or we still have to have a public hearing on Resolution? Everybody keep me on task, it's way past my bedtime. We're going to open the public hearing on Resolution 27-24. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool? No, Madam Chair, we did not. We did not have anyone sign up in advance. Is anyone interested in coming up at this time to testify on Resolution 27-24? Yep?
All right. Yes.
Come on, Mr. Enright. State your name and address for the record, and you have two minutes.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Members of the council, my name is Patrick Enright, Huntwood Drive in Gambles. Going over this, I was wondering whether all this compared with, say, Resolution 20-24, where you eliminated explanation and expansion and clarification of why you were doing the Open Meetings Act charter amendment the way it was. Here, you're expanding. Here, you're blowing it all up and putting all sorts of information in there, and one of the things I noticed that you did as you took out on line 23, the word "financial" relating to activities and affairs of the county, but yet down on line 25, you leave in "to conduct other financial," where you haven't, you've eliminated "financial" to begin with, and now you're addressing "other financial." I think that the charter is a framework for governing. It's not a repository for statutes, statutory stuff, and I think that a broad language in the charter, followed by implementing code, implementing codification, would be much more efficient than just stuffing everything, everything you could think of the auditor to do, and God help you if you miss one because you then have to wait two years to add it or subtract it. So those are my comments on this resolution.
Thank you. The public hearing on Resolution 27-24 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 27-24. Resolution Number 2724, Resolution Proposing an Amendment to the Charter of Anarundel County to Clarify the Duties of the County Auditor. Is there any further discussion of my colleagues? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution 27-24. Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
I'll firstly say that I'm going to support it. I'm going to say aye, but with the notion that I do want us to be careful because, you know, when I read this, in my mind, it definitely seems very, very broad, and I just hope whatever council, future councils or future auditors have a measured temperament in how they approach this new capability that we have, because it definitely gives us, and I'm not, which is why I'm supporting it, because I ultimately think the legislative branch has a role to play in the checks and balances, but I also think that there should be guardrails in place to prevent, you know, us from, sort of preventing the county executive from executing their duties in an efficient way, so on and so forth. But I'll say aye because, at this point, so.
Mr. Volkey.
I just want to thank Mr. Enright for his comments, because I generally agree with him that this should not be a repository of, you know, superfluous things. I agree with him. I think the only reason that I disagree on this piece is because of the challenges that the auditor's office has had with the executive branch historically in getting some of this information, and by making it a charter amendment as opposed to a code provision, it really elevates it in the eyes of seriousness or severity, if you will. So I think that does add to it, that gives it some extra meat and hopefully some extra backing that will allow this to be used effectively. But I do appreciate the comments. I think they were spot on. Aye.
Ms. Hammer.
Aye.
Ms. Feedler.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution 2724 is fast. Okay. Is there any other business any council member would like to bring before the council at this time?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Feedler.
I just want to thank our staff. Today was a Herculean effort, as were the previous days for Region Four. Just thank you. You guys put this together and handled it and carried it as a new staff collectively, so just thank you.
Mr. Volkey.
Second the comments. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This council is adjourned until Monday, July 15. I believe we can meet at 7:00 PM that night?
Thank you, Director.
Yes. Have a happy and relaxing Fourth of July. Everyone stay safe. Good night.